We're going to go ahead and call this meeting of the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors order. Mr. Melton, will you lead us in the pledge?
Go ahead.
I'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll just have a few moments of silence. Item four on our agenda is a request to postpone any items, additions, deletions, or changes, and we do have four of those items tonight. I'm going to just propose all of them at one time. There is a handout at your place. The first is a request to postpone Consent Agenda item I, which is Resolution R 2019-20, prioritizing use of the county-owned parks and recreation facilities to a later date so that more information may be gathered. The suggestion was made that perhaps the June 13th meeting might be appropriate for that. The next one is also postponement of Public Hearing item D, which is Ordinance 02019-19, which relates to conservation subdivisions, and we would like to postpone that to the May 9th meeting. The other two are changes in the order of presentation. We would like to move the public hearing on the FY 2020 budget, CIP, and real property tax from item 12G to item 12A, and subsequently, all the others would roll down. And the final change would be to move Consent Agenda item H, which is Resolution R 2019-21, approving the acquisition of Founders Bridge Utility Company, subject to due diligence evaluation, to Old Business item B. And I make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to make sure the public hearing, since we've advertised a public hearing for tonight on the conservation subdivision, that anyone wishing to speak would be able to speak at the public comment period in case they can't make the May 9th meeting. That's the only thing I'd like to make sure they have the opportunity.
Yeah.
They can make public comment on it.
My thinking was if there was changes, you know, that we were going to make in the workshop, or the meeting that we had to discuss in more detail, then there would be another advertisement that would be more reflective of the public hearing.
Okay. As long as anybody's here tonight, since it's been advertised as a public hearing, be able to speak at the public comment period in case they can't make the May 9th meeting.
Well, they can speak at the first public comment.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And that goes for the resolution on county parks and rec as well, at this first public comment period, and the second one, if you'd like to stay with us all evening. We welcome you. So, there's a motion on the floor.
Second.
And I don't believe we need a poll on that, do we? So, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved. That takes us to formal approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. That takes us to our public comment period. This is the first of two public comment periods. We do invite members of the public to share their thoughts on the matters and issues that are germane to county business. If you're here to speak on an item on tonight's agenda that is having a public hearing, other than the two we just postponed, you must wait and share your items, your thoughts during the public hearing on each specific item. This is not a forum for political campaigning, promoting a business, or personal attacks. Please keep your comments focused on the issues and subject matter over which this board has responsibility. And please keep your comments to three minutes if you are speaking as an individual, and five minutes if you are representing a group. So that staff may get the name and address correct in the minutes, please sign in and state your name and address for the record. And if you would like to speak, please go ahead and come down and line up. And we'll begin.
I'm new at this. Becky Latham, 2725 Jones Creek Drive, Powhatan. I'm here to speak on just a little bit about the parks and rec. I did bring y'all some information. If, I don't know who gives it to you.
You can set them down there and we'll...
I'm just asking that you look over the information that I provided. I'm currently the contractor at the concession stand. I've actually been there since the park opened in 2008. So, I really have a good idea of what goes on as far as league play and tournament play. I know the Little League did address y'all. Some of it wasn't accurate, but I think there's a happy medium for tournaments and for league play. But I've given you figures, a little bit, you know, they said that most of the teams, while all the teams were out of county, that's not true. You do have a lot of county girls that are solely, the teams are solely made up of county girls. The draw is tremendous as far as bringing revenue into the county, and you can see the figures in the back. I have requested a meeting with the county administrator. Mary Ann is going to arrange that for me and the county administrator to meet, to go over these figures. Consider it all, not just for one, but as a whole, for the county and what the tournaments do bring. I mean, the Little League brings also, but tournaments also bring as well. And the season for Little League is like mid, April to mid-June. Tournaments go from March to April, I mean, March to November. But again, I ask you to consider it and then make a decision, and I will meet with the county administrator. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Chip Dix, and I sent you a letter the other day with regard to the downzoning, and I'd just like to make a few brief comments. I'm here on behalf of the Richmond Association of Realtors, and I commend the county and the board for taking a look at what needs to happen on Route 60 East Carter. That's a very vibrant Carter, and when you look at your comprehensive plan, it's designed for economic development, and quite frankly, in a lot of circumstances, I'm not sure that you're accomplishing your economic development goals with respect to what appears to be, in some cases, piecemeal zoning. And I've read all your various different minutes, your background papers, your efforts to deal with RC zoning, and my conclusion as a land use attorney is that there are ways to fix the RC zoning in a way that would accomplish what you're trying to achieve, I believe, without downzoning 509 parcels of property. Those downzoning cases, as a matter of law in Virginia, are somewhat suspect, and a proposed downzoning of 509 parcels raises a number of serious legal questions. And so, I'm not suggesting that you delay. You've been working on this a great period of time already, and you're ready to make some decisions, but the first thing that has to happen is, in my view, that you would update your comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan from nine years ago is substantially out of date, and in addition to that, when you look at the comprehensive plan, it focuses on economic development in the Carter, but doesn't describe how you go about doing that. I think there's a way to amend your proposed comprehensive plan with consensus from citizens and property owners to achieve that objective, and then to move through thereafter, after the comp plan is done, and then do the zoning. There's case law out there that says you need to have your comprehensive plan updated in place in order to then adopt zoning. I think if you look at the goals, and I've looked at some of the buildings that I've heard complaints about, and you've wisely adopted a design and development standard ordinance that addresses many of those issues. I also am concerned that when you have, as was raised, Mr. Williams, I believe, by you at the last meeting, the question is what happens to the proffers that exist on current properties when you look at the fact that those proffers and those zoning conditions were imposed as part of a public hearing, and the citizens expect those proffers and those conditions to be upheld? So, there's so many different things to consider when you look back at the overall downzoning, whereas if you fix what's there, and I looked through the uses of what's permitted by right versus what's permitted by conditional use, and you adjusted those already. And so, I don't see the concern of fixing RC versus basically eliminating RC. So, I'm here on behalf of the Richmond Association of Realtors. They asked me to provide these brief comments to you, and I have. We stand ready to assist if you want to start doing something quick and move forward with a comprehensive plan review. We're happy to participate in that process, and I've been authorized to participate and assist in that process. Likewise, in the revision of the RC zoning, I've likewise been authorized to participate in that process. So, I appreciate your consideration, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close this first public comment period. Move on to the consent agenda. Is there...
I'll make a motion. We approve Consent Agenda as amended.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Kevin, will you join me down there? Members of the board, this is a motion to recognize Kevin Reichert, who has been our resident engineer from VDOT for several years, in the form of a motion. Whereas, the Powhatan Board of Supervisors recognize the importance of safety, accessibility, access management, and maintenance of roads in Virginia, and whereas Kevin C. Reichert has been the board's go-to VDOT engineer for several years, and whereas Mr. Reichert has served VDOT in its land development, project management, and residency divisions for eight years, and whereas he is presently resident engineer of VDOT's Chesterfield-Powhatan Amelia Residency, and whereas the relationship between Powhatan and VDOT has never been better than it has been under Mr. Reichert's administration, and whereas the board commends Kevin's accessibility, responsiveness, technical, and managerial professionalism, and whereas Kevin has decided to pursue his career with a move to the private sector engineering. Now therefore be it known that the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors sincerely thanks Kevin for his service to Powhatan and wishes him the very best in his new career, and calls upon the residents of this community to sincerely thank him for his outstanding services to the community. Madam Chairman, that is a form of a motion.
Second.
All right. Comments?
Madam Chair, I have a comment. Kevin, thank you for all you've done for us. I know I've called you on your cell phone at wild hours, early in the morning, late in the evening, and you've always responded and got, you know, came out, met with citizens who had concerns, and helped me work through some issues in my district. I certainly do appreciate it, and I wish you the best in your new career.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Kevin, I've still got your phone number. It's my turn to lunch. I haven't forgotten. Just echo what the other board members have said and what I know they feel. You've done a good job representing VDOT in this county. Your service has been impeccable. We're going to miss you. If I had a vote to keep you here, I would have taken that vote, but unfortunately, you're moving on to the private sector, and I'm sure they're going to be well-served. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, Kevin. Thanks for coming tonight, and at any of the times that we've needed you, while you've been working here, you've been there for us. There are two things that you and I have been working on very recently, a ride-along down Dorset Road all the way down to talk about lowering speed limit in all or part of it, and also a neighborhood that's had some pretty severe flooding damage from the two big storms we had last year. So, thanks, we've made some progress there. Everybody should know one thing about this man. It's taking two people to replace him. I think that says pretty much all, and the last thing I'll say is, you're going to miss a really exciting ride-along at 55 miles an hour down Dorset Road. Too bad you won't be there, but thanks a lot, Kevin. Appreciate it.
All righty. All in favor?
Aye.
Kevin, you want to say anything?
Sure. Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to y'all. I've really enjoyed working with the board, as well as the citizens of Powhatan, and enjoyed my time at the residency. So, thank you for this recognition.
Madam Chair, I have one other question. Kevin, will you be here for the six-year secondary stuff tonight?
No, you're in good hands.
Okay, well, don't run off. No, just kidding.
Thank you.
Didn't want to let him off the hook.
Senator Watkins, and Mr. Lerno, and Mr. Chardine, would you join me, please?
Would you like the other members of the EDA that are in the audience to come up as well?
Sure.
That'd be great. We have Dan Jones and Tim Benusa.
Good to see you again. Been a while.
Hey, Dan.
Good to see you, ma'am. Good to see you. Long time no see.
Madam Chairman, this is a proposal to create a proclamation recognizing May as Business Appreciation Month, whereas businesses play a pivotal role in the strengthening of Commonwealth, of the Commonwealth by embracing job creation and the innovation technologies, and by employing a diverse workforce to preserve the economic well-being of all of our citizens, and whereas the county of Powhatan is pleased to have a thriving base of businesses and industry support the local economy, and whereas Powhatan businesses operate in various sectors including manufacturing, information technology, agribusiness, tourism, mining, construction, automotive, and retail, and whereas the county of Powhatan is pleased to recognize the accomplishments of our existing businesses, entrepreneurs, small minority and women-owned businesses, and the major employers that contribute greatly to the vitality of our county, and whereas these businesses provide essential employment opportunities, provide local tax revenues, and make other significant contributions to our community that promote both the educational opportunities for our citizens and a variety of activities thereby increasing the quality of life of our citizens, and whereas the Business Appreciation Events offer the citizens of the county of Powhatan a unique opportunity to recognize our businesses here for the essential role they play in moving the Commonwealth of Virginia forward. Therefore, we, the members of the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors, do recognize May 2019 as Business Appreciation Month in the county of Powhatan, and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. That's in the form of a motion, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Comments? Any comments?
Aye.
Yes, aye. Thank you very much. We appreciate what you do. Senator Watkins, would you like to make any comments?
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Members of the board, I would just like to point out that one of the things that your board authorized for our authority to do over the last year was to take an in-depth study of economic development in Powhatan County and its future, and how to make sure that its future was thriving and progressive and helpful to this community. One of the primary things that we came up with was to make sure that the people who operate businesses here in Powhatan County are recognized, and we follow up with them to make sure that their needs are met in Powhatan County. The best reputation that we have is the one we leave with the businesses that are here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would like to make one quick comment. For those of you in the audience that are business owners, thank you. If you're not a business owner, please spend your money at your local business, because one penny of every four and a half cent collected in the locality stays in the locality. If you don't believe it adds up, look at how much our budget has grown over the years as we've attracted more business. So, next time you go buy gas in Chesterfield, think about buying it in Powhatan. Next time you go buy your groceries in Chesterfield, think about buying it in Powhatan. Support your local business, because one penny adds up. Thank you.
Would you all like to come up for the St. Luke's proclamation? Dan, would you like to come back up for the St. Luke's proclamation? Oh, I didn't see the... Oh, yeah, back there. All right. This is... This is a proclamation recognizing and honoring St. Luke's Episcopal Church on the occasion of its 175th anniversary. Whereas, St. Luke's Episcopal Church is commemorating its 175th anniversary, May 4th and 5th of this year, and current and former church members, friends, and community members are coming together to help celebrate this milestone in the life of the parish. And whereas in 1842, the Reverend Joshua Albert Massey was sent to Southam Parish. He held services in Peterville Church and Manikin Church, and worked to begin two new congregations at St. Luke's and Emmanuel. And whereas God gave the new congregation of St. Luke's the vision and the will to construct a new church, and led by John H. Holmes, Richard Gilliam of Buena Vista, and Richard Royster as trustees, acquired from William H. Harrison and his wife Deborah 1.5 acres of land upon which to build on July 23rd, 1843. And whereas, on April 10th, 1845, Bishop Johns consecrated St. Luke's Church Powhatan, and in his report wrote, "This building has much to commend it, but its dimensions are so small that I trust its enlargement will soon be necessary." And whereas, St. Luke's Episcopal Church was placed on the National Register of Historic Places by the United States Department of the Interior in October 1989, and is also a Virginia historic landmark. And whereas, many distinguished citizens of Powhatan have worshipped and served at St. Luke's, many of whom are interred in its historic cemetery. And whereas, St. Luke's has been and continues to be a place of worship, healing, education, and community, and whereas the congregation has steadfastly worked to help address the spiritual and temporal needs of our community, currently hosting monthly senior luncheons, supporting and assisting at the Powhatan Food Pantry, supporting Backpacks of Love, the Free Clinic of Powhatan, and Habitat for Humanity, to name a few. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors hereby expresses our gratitude to St. Luke's Church for its contributions to our community from 1844 to 2019, and extends our most sincere congratulations on the illustrious occasion of its 175th anniversary, with our most heartfelt best wishes for many more happy and prosperous years to come. I make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
All right. So, comments?
Madam Chair, you really came to talk about the history of Powhatan County without talking about that church, because the history of the county, much of it, goes through that church. It's one of the crown jewels that we have in this county. Congratulations, looking forward to another 175 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Similarly, I would say, in addition to the history, which is certainly to be respected by all of us, it is the history of service that you continue to do for our people, the things that are listed in the resolution, I think, say a little bit of it, but y'all do a lot more than that, and the continuity of that over centuries is fantastic, and we thank you for being part of our community.
All right. Here you go. You can take that with you. Okay, so this brings us to Old Business. So, that is Ordinance 2018-38. It's what we all know fondly as the RC zoning issue.
All right. Thank you. Case number 18-09-AZ, which is Ordinance number O-201838, is a request by Powhatan County to eliminate the residential commercial or RC zoning district by repealing Sections 83-360 through 83-364 of the zoning ordinance. Since that zoning district would be eliminated if this ordinance is approved, all properties that are currently zoned RC will have to be reclassified to another zoning district. For clarity, the ordinance lists which category and what future zoning district each parcel will go to. A public hearing was held on this request on November 26, 2018. This issue was also discussed at a workshop on December 13, 2018, and it was discussed as old business on February 25, 2019, and March 25, 2019. The new zoning district for each parcel will generally be determined based upon the use of the property and whether it's located within a platted subdivision. There have not been any changes to the draft ordinance since this issue was discussed on March 25, 2019, but research was compiled regarding proffered conditions associated with properties zoned RC. That information was distributed to the Board of Supervisors and is included within the agenda packet. There's one issue I'd like to highlight for you all. There are two parcels in the ordinance that were shown on the GIS incorrectly and should be corrected in the ordinance. Tax map 27-8A and 27-10 were not rezoned by an applicant to RC and should be listed as going to agricultural 10A10 as originally advertised in the ordinance. The Department of Community Development recommends approval of this request with the rationale listed in the staff report. On November 7, 2018, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on this request. After discussion, the Planning Commission recommended approval with a vote of three to one to one. I'd be happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions. So, you just referenced two parcels?
Yes, sir.
That were inadvertently listed in the GIS system as, having gone through your zoning, when they received their letter, what did it state?
It stated they were going to A10.
So, the letter was correct?
The letter was correct. The ordinance is not correct.
Okay. That's important to me, because they were notified they were going to go to CC or whatever.
Yeah, but they were notified...
The letter they received, the personal letter they received. Okay. Thank you. I have more questions, but right now, reserve those.
Go ahead.
No, I'm okay right now.
I'll ask the other one. So, it may be, Andrew, we just had a respected land use attorney encourage us to adopt a comprehensive plan before we do this. We've been beating ourselves up, saying we should do this, and then adopt a comprehensive plan. So, I'm not trying to muddy the waters here, but I do, in your eyes, the comprehensive plan that we've worked on for quite a while, we're pretty close to, I guess, adopting, does that subsequently, will that change tremendously to where it would, in your opinion, affect what we're doing tonight? Maybe it's too broad-based of a question, but, yeah.
So, the zoning map is a tool that counties can use to implement the recommendations and the vision set forth in the comprehensive plan.
Yep. I know you and I have had long discussions, I don't think we have some good discussions here, that we could have passed our comprehensive plan and not worked, as the zoning map's a tool in the plan, we didn't need to do this in reverse, but anyway. So, you feel that the comprehensive plan is not going to substantially change where it would change the thought process in the elimination of RC?
No, I think the update, in my opinion, the current draft that we have is an update to the 2010 plan. It's not a drastic rewrite or a drastic redo to the concepts that were presented in the 2010 plan. Our growth areas are generally the same. We do tweak some of the land use designations within the three growth areas we have in Powhatan County. I think the overall concepts presented in the 2010 plan are not much different than what the draft 2019 plan shows. This draft is a refinement of those concepts, because again, in 2010, we rewrote the entire comprehensive plan.
Thank you.
Andrew, I ask you, at the last meeting, Mr. Tucker, you know, raised the issue, why would we want to defer this? Because somebody would come back the next meeting, potentially, and there'd be another reason not to get it done. I committed to Mr. Tucker at that last meeting that I'd be ready to go forward this meeting with action on the elimination of the RC zoning. You did what I asked you to do. You went through and you looked at the proffered conditions on the properties that were outstanding. In your view, as the planning director, you see anything in there fatal that's going to cause a severe heartburn that outweighs the reasons that we're going forward with the elimination of RC?
I think in general, no. There are no major proffered conditions that would negatively impact the county as a whole. One thing to note is our last rezoning to RC was in 2009. We have updated our zoning ordinance since then in 2015. We did a major rewrite. The development standards have been amended to better reflect our vision for the community. For example, now we have stream buffers, we have different landscaping requirements, that kind of thing. So, whereas before, a lot of these cases, proffered conditions that address design or... or development standards that were optional, now those types of things are generally required by the ordinance anyway. So I personally do not see any major issues with these proffered conditions not being part of the zoning ordinance if this was approved.
Any other questions, Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. Nordvig?
No.
Mr. Tucker? Mr. Melton?
No questions, I have some comments.
I'll make a motion if you're ready, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move to reapprove ordinance O-2018-38. And real quick question to the county administrator, do we need to include anything in the motion that addresses the correction that he just mentioned in GIS?
Yes. You'll need to correct because the ordinance itself has, you'll have to make a motion to make an amendment to that ordinance first to address those two parcels, and then a second motion to approve, if that's the motion you're gonna make.
Okay, so I need to make a motion to approve the correction to those two parcels?
Make a motion to make a correction to those two parcels to reclassify them as A10 would be the first.
Okay, I'll make the motion to reclassify the two parcels that was identified by the county planning director to A10.
Second.
Vote on that first?
Yes.
Okay.
Don't need a roll call for that.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll make the second motion to approve ordinance O-2018-38.
Second.
Mr. Williams?
All right.
Can we have some comment?
I'm sorry.
Discussion.
Discussion.
So Madam Chair, I have some comments I'd like to make. First, I'd like to thank all the citizens who participated in all the work groups as we've worked through this RC issue. I'd like to thank the committee that formed itself, that worked on trying to come up with a cohesive plan to bring forward. Much dialogue, much thought went into that. I'd like to thank the Richmond Association of Realtors for their participation in that meeting, I think, and also some of the information that Mr. Dix provided us tonight. I will not be in favor of this motion. I am in favor of attractive rural development. What I'm not in support of is control. We just heard appreciation of business. I don't think this makes us have a business-friendly appreciation ordinance. Mr. Dix pointed it out, Andrew just made a comment that he thinks that all the ordinance updates that we've done over the period of time deliver us the ability in our comprehensive plan to deliver quality development. Standards have been improved and enhanced consistently in all districts. All districts, I repeat. We have a countywide development book. We have a development or design pattern book, which must be submitted to the Planning Commission and reviewed for approval prior to site plan approval. Staff and agencies approve all site plans, review all cases. Landscape was just upgraded and voted upon by both the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisor. Access management waivers now have to be approved by the Board of Supervisor. This does not address GC, just RC, and there are still a lot of GC out there, general commercial, that is not being discussed here. Proffers were public hearing items. I don't think many people in the public would know what proffers went to a project, but they were public hearing items, and we're gonna deal away with them in one fell motion tonight. Therefore, I am not in support of this elimination of RC. I am for private property rights, limited government, and the free enterprise system. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
If you've been to any of the meetings previously on RC, you've heard me speak. Now, the reason that we're doing this, it's either you have by right or you don't have by right. There's no in-between. Now, when you have by right development, you don't have what you have with public hearings, transparency, opportunities for public input, opportunities for the public to see what the county is planning as opposed to seeing it rolled out after it's been approved on the back of the county administration building with no public input. Now, we had two cases here in the county that had to come through the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. Both of them began as by right development. So what happened, we had piecemeal development in the beginning, by right, where it decremented at spacing requirements. We got into how did the road classification get approved with reduced entrance spacing? None of those things would have happened if you had had a public hearing before the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. It wouldn't have happened. I use those two cases as examples, as teaching moments, as why you didn't want the by right development, the RC, that we've had plague in this county for years. It's a well-known secret, it's been a pariah on economic development. If you think if you want good development in this county, you have to have standards, you have to have a good thoroughfare system. And if you look in every other county that occupies Route 60, they do what? They have public hearings with the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors with transparency. So I'm gonna applaud my colleagues on the board for the board having the courage to finally step up to a problem that's been kicked down the road by every other board in previous years. So I am very excited tonight, and I'm very appreciative of the other board members and what they have accomplished here tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair, there are other things that haven't been mentioned. I won't go down the whole grocery list, but so that people out there who might be new to this issue can understand, we've been going over this issue for months and months. But basically, Mr. Williams is correct, it's about by right. You either have a right to develop as-is by just getting the appropriate permits through the staff of the county, or it's gonna be reviewed by the Planning Commission, by this board, and most importantly, by you, the public. The people in this county have been loud and clear to me for five years that what they want is they want to keep Powhatan Powhatan. They say over and over, "Mr. Nordvig, please do not turn us into Chesterfield County." That is what I hear time and time again. To this board's credit, they have developed a vision that allows for commercial growth, but Powhatan-friendly commercial growth, keep the rural feel as we grow. That requires being able to manage the growth, not stop it, but manage it. I think everybody up here is pro-commercial development. It's how we develop that's the issue. So with by right, we can cast all the vision we want, and we have no control to enforce it. And that's the bottom line. So in line with what the people have asked me to do, representing them, is I will want to get rid of RC zoning so that we have good review at all levels, so that future development is in accordance with what the people say they desire. Thank you.
All right. So there's a motion and a second on the table. So, there you go. Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Nordvig?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
No.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavill?
No.
All right. I inadvertently looked over item 9D. I apologize for that. That is an economic development update. Mr. Shardine, if you'd like to present that, I apologize.
So Brett Shardine, Assistant County Administrator there, I'll give you a brief update on some of the economic development activity that has taken place over the past year. So I have a PowerPoint here with some of that. So first, talk about the relaunching of the Economic Development Department, some of the economic measures we've been seeing, projects that were initiated or completed over the past year or so, and then findings from some of our businesses, visits with businesses over the past year. So first, we had to relaunch the Economic Development Department. As you know, the county was without one officially for several years. You all identified, I believe in 2014, with an economic development study and plan that it was a high priority and something you wanted to redevelop. So that study, it was comprehensive, it was also very large. So you asked then the EDA to take that plan and condense it into a work plan that could actually be implemented with staff in the department. So then the EDA, starting in 2016, worked with a consultant and economic development professionals across the state to put together a program that would be the right fit for Powhatan. Then we hired Roxanne Salerno in April of last year to be our one full-time economic development staff. I work in economic development as well, but about half of the time, the other half of the time, working with the administration, planning and zoning and building department.
Can you take that?
Oh, yeah, sorry. So with putting the department and program back together, we had to put a number of things in place, forms. We came up with a database of all existing businesses and cataloged them so we could see exactly what we had already and track visiting them and their issues. So there's 565, breaking more of their business locations that we track in that, as well as a number of home-based businesses, agricultural operations, and others. Then a visit log for when we do visit with businesses, tracking their issues, what they say, when we need a follow-up, and all of that. Employment data, looking at that, jobs, and then project tracking, so as we have new ventures looking to come here or working with existing businesses to expand, having a database to track the progress on those. We put together a guide to doing business, so when someone does come to our office and says, "We'd like to start a business in the county," they have one document with all of the information, giving them resources of exactly what they have to do between business license, zoning permits, sign permits, all of those things, getting a name for the business, all of that. And then we put together a business welcome packet, so any new business that does come to the county, or any time a business license is issued, we'll give them a packet of information with a letter that welcomes them to the county, thanks them for bringing their business here, and gives them some information on resources they might need. And then our planning and building departments have done a good job in improving some of the checklists and forms and processes that businesses would use when going through their process. And then we launched new websites and updated old ones. So yes, Powhatan is our economic development website, that's brand new. And then Discover Powhatan is our tourism website that we've had for some time, but we've gone through and fully redone that. Relaunched our Facebook page, which existed, but updated that with more content, and then created a new Instagram account. And then updated our inventory of available sites. So when somebody comes in and says, "We'd like to grow our business and we need a new location," or when the State Economic Development Agency is talking to somebody that's looking in our region to locate a business, the first thing they're gonna do is go on that website and look at the inventory of available sites and buildings for new commercial or light industrial development. When we started out last year, we had only three sites in there. And if the state agency is working with somebody, they're not going to call us up and say, "We see you only have three sites, but do you have more? Can you show us something else?" No, they're just going to write Powhatan off the list, move along, and take that business somewhere else. So we've updated that, we now have 29 listings in that with full information on the zoning, the available utilities, the asking price, the broker, maps, surveys, all of that. And we're updating that and including more sites regularly.
Madam Chair, a question. Brett, do you want questions during the presentation?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. You say we have 29 listings now. About how many do you project that we will have? Like, what's the number floating out there that you think is close?
Yeah, I don't know if I can put a number to it. My ask Roxanne Salerno. There's a number of them that we, you know, we see the signs on the side of Route 60 that lands for sale. We'll reach out to them. Sometimes we're not able to get a reply. Surprisingly, which when we started, this surprising to us, a lot of times brokers, for whatever reason, don't want to share that information. So sometimes we can have a hard time getting the information from them, and we're not going to put something in the system unless we at least have a pretty good amount of information from it.
So it's still a work in process, and I'm assuming that if it's a large, maybe even out-of-state development company, this is a pretty significant thing to try to do? Is that, at least time-wise?
Yeah, it can be, it can be. Yeah. Unfortunately, once we put it in there, then it's set, and most of those things don't change. But getting the information and working with them can be time-consuming. There's certainly more than 29 sites currently available today in Powhatan, absolutely. But how many more there are out there, I don't, Roxanne, can you venture it?
About 10.
Yeah, yeah, so a few more.
Say that again.
About 10 or 15.
Roxanne said about 10 or 15.
Good.
Additionally.
Yeah, and that runs the gamut from raw land, that's a forest, with maybe just some base zoning, to existing buildings that are fully ready to go tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
And then talk about tourism and some good projects going on with that. One, in about three weeks, the USDGA Open, that's the U.S. Disabled Golfers' U.S. Open, will be in Powhatan County at Independence Golf. It was at Tampa last year. So this will feature players internationally with disabilities. So it'll be a big event, over 70 players at Independence Golf. So that's going to be a big one that Richmond Region Tourism helped bring to the county. Then the MAPR Conference, this is a conference of Mid-Atlantic public relations professionals, so writers for major magazines, bloggers, YouTube influencers. They tour different tourism venues and other assets like that to come up with stories for the magazines and the newspapers and other content. They haven't been in Richmond in about 15 years, so this will be the first time they're coming back. It will be housed out of a Belize hotel in Herico, but all of the field trips and events and locations they're gonna see are gonna be in Ashland and Powhatan, so that's gonna be the focus of this conference. So that'll be huge exposure to some of our venues, our restaurants, distilleries, our parks, our shops, things like that. And then other, as in tourism promotion, the Richmond Region Tourism Guide, now there's a number of, for the first time, a number of Powhatan tourism assets included in that. The Brew Trail that previously existed now has a west component in it that includes Fine Creek Brewing, as well as Looking Hole Creek and Goochlin, so extended those into that. And then the Attraction Guest Pass Program that Richmond Region Tourism puts on, that's a guest pass that's given out to, again, writers, tourism professionals, over 4,000 distributed each year, that gives you free or reduced admission to tourism assets, and there's eight Powhatan locations in that that will greatly increase their exposure. And then another thing in restarting this program we had to do was reestablish or establish partnerships that didn't exist before. So we set out to do that, meeting with state agencies, utility companies, VDOT staff, commercial brokers, as well as staff in economic development departments for all of our neighboring and regional localities to find out, you know, what are the lessons they've learned in doing this and what are some of the best practices. So now we have relationships with all of these groups, so when our businesses need something, we have relationships there and can point them to those. Looking at some economic measures, one, EIG, they measure the, they call it the Stress Community Index, or how economically vibrant a community is or is not. Previously, in the 2007 to 2011 timeframe, when they measured us, we were mid-tier, which is okay, not bad, middle ground, and we were in the top 50, I believe, most economically prosperous localities in Virginia, out of about 140. So again, kind of top third percent, not bad. Then most recently, they came out with the ratings for the 2012-2016 timeframe, and Powhatan significantly is elevated. We're now rated as prosperous, which is the highest rating a locality can have for economic vitality, and we are now in the top 10 most economically prosperous localities in the state. So again, a big jump. And some of the localities up there, Loudon, Arlington, Fairfax, and Herico, if you look at them, they're all kind of obvious and big, but Powhatan, certainly, I would say, the most rural one in the top 10. And then this just came out.
Another question, please. When you said most prosperous, is that per capita? I find it hard to believe it's total gross revenue competing with Hampton Roads and Norfolk and Nova and all that.
Yeah, no, no, correct. Just their population size, the number of businesses and things, that would be a different equation, but this is per capita.
All right.
And then this rating just came out, I believe, two weeks ago, top healthiest communities with U.S. News and Aetna. So Powhatan was ranked the seventh most healthy locality in the state of Virginia and the, I believe, 62 in the entire country. So again, that's, as you'll see later, one big reason so many businesses locate here is kind of the lifestyle, the community, all of those things. So having a healthy, safe community is a big draw for businesses currently and will be in the future as well, so that's a great ranking to see. Employment, you can see, blue was 2018 employment and orange is the 2019. So for pretty much all of the year, we've been tracking significantly ahead of employment where we were last year. You see some of the seasonal employment coming off at the end there, so it'll be interesting when the next quarter comes out to see where we are compared to last year. But again, for the most part of 2019 and late 2018, we've been above significantly where we were before. And then awards, Powhatan businesses have done a great job in getting recognized and winning awards, so there's just a few of them there. There've been a lot more. Many of those, they're getting on their own, but we're also trying to find those outlets for getting recognition and nominate them, or make them aware that they can nominate themselves for some of these things and get recognition for the great businesses and great things that are happening here in the county. And then our And then our own departments received two awards this year. The Virginia Economic Developers Association awarded Powhatan their SIDA Award for the relaunch of our program, so finding that we use the best practices and thoroughly studied it and put things in place that would make for a good economic development program. And then the Virginia Association of Zoning Officials recognized our planning and zoning department as the organization of the year. As you recall, back in 2016, maybe early 2017, we did a restructuring of that department, so again, finding that we're using best practices and we have a highly functioning, well-staffed department. So it's just great to see recognition externally from competitive groups like that. And then Powhatan businesses in the news, again, we've been trying to make more connections with news outlets, Roxanne's regularly putting out news and press releases to all of the various regional and even countrywide news outlets to try and get more exposure and focus on the great things our businesses are doing. And actually, last week, I don't know if any of you saw it, but Chadwick Orchids was actually on the national CBS 6 Evening News, so that was pretty cool to see that exposure nationally for one of our businesses here, but again, trying to get, put more of a spotlight on the things that have been happening and showing people the good things in our locality. And then look at some of the commercial investment and projects that have happened over the past year. Many of these came before you, projects you've seen, some of them may not have. So Colony Construction, as you might recall, they acquired additional property adjacent to South Creek to relocate and expand their current operation, and they currently have permits under review that we're looking at for an expanded maintenance facility, so they're growing and choosing to stay in the county. Colony Construction, or sorry, Classic Granite and Marble, as you recall, recently, the board approved that rezoning, so that one's going through site plan phases, it'll be one of the largest light industrial projects we've had in some time. Oriole Landscaping, they relocated the county and built a new building in Oak Bridge Business Park. Moore Steel, for years, they'd been operating out of what was intended to be a temporary construction trailer, so they finished construction this year on a nice, permanent office for their location. Nice concrete, you recall, you approved the condition lease permit for that last year, so they're going through the site plan permit currently. Now and Again Consignment moved into a vacant space. New Horizon Bank opened their branch, that was early 2018, and then they also moved their corporate headquarters into a vacant building on New Dorset Road. South Creek Dry Cleaners moved into a vacant space in South Creek. Nails and Beyond also, in South Creek, occupied a previously vacant space. River Run Animal Hospital went through some renovations at the Elam Animal Hospital and opened up, and they are only the second 24-hour emergency vet care in the region. Sean Stern Computer Services, previously located in the city of Richmond, moved out here into our Oak Bridge Business Park in a previously vacant space. Powhatan Family Vision moved into that, for they were in the strip mall there, and moved out into the standalone building, which significantly increased in size. Currently under construction right now in Oak Bridge is about 20,000 square feet of leasable office, light industrial space. And then home-based businesses, that's one thing we've been recently trying to do, is get out to more of them and how to connect with them. So a few examples, Vanilla and Bourbon have been doing a great job with pop-up events, especially a lot with Three Crosses Distilling. Brothers Three Coffee Roasting Company here in Powhatan County, that sold at some locations, and now it's the exclusive coffee sold at Independence Golf Course, so great that they're using a local Powhatan business, so there's a lot of good things happening home-based that we're trying to connect with and promote. U of R Golf Training Facility, they've had a presence at Independence Golf in Powhatan since, I believe, 2014, calling that their home course, but they haven't had a physical presence, so now they've just recently finished construction on their clubhouse and training facility, so now the U of R Richmond Spyder Golf Team has a permanent physical location here in the county. Fast Feet Sports Academy, they occupy about 10,000 square feet of previously vacant space, that's next to the food line or down from the food line in South Creek, so they train youth in a number of different ball sports and athleticism. Toast moved into the previous Mediterranean space in Winterfield Place. Burger King opened off 60. El Henette opened in South Creek. Smoking Pig Barbecue, previously just a food truck, opened their first brick-and-mortar location in the county. Dunkin' Donuts, that's currently under construction on 60.
Brett, you're making me hungry, man.
Yeah.
I mean, I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
You can leave it right there on Dunkin' Donuts, that would be good. You mentioned Oriole, and so this is not about that company, I want to make that clear, but when you mentioned Oak Bridge Industrial Park, that's in my district that I serve. There are still storefronts, if you will, in that industrial park where there's never been a floor put in, there's still builder's gravel down there, and you know that. I think we talked about this when we met a couple of months ago, but one way to keep Powhatan rural is to fill existing office space, light industrial space that we have that's standing vacant, instead of building new buildings. Do we have a certain ratio or a certain target number that we're trying, you know, you're never going to fill all the vacant space, and certainly we don't want to shut down all new building, I'm not saying that either, but do we have a certain ratio that we're shooting for where we encourage businesses to move into an already-built space as opposed to just randomly building another building there?
It's a standard practice, certainly, we'd always favor that, and I think they would as well. If there's a location that's available and fits their needs, then it's going to be probably quicker to get in there than building it, less uncertainty, you know what you're getting. So yeah, we would, just as general practice, if we have something, inventory in the county that's available, we're going to show them that and steer them towards that rather than nuke construction. We certainly have, I would say, not a ton of inventory, though, in available space like that, especially a lot of people are looking for docs, they want docs, so a lot of the spaces we have might be more office and not that, but when we do have something available, absolutely.
Okay, and I know they need certain square footage and public water sewer, you know, that might need natural gas to do their business, whatever, so I get that.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Second thing is, you're probably not going to have this in your presentation, so since I'm interrupting a bit, a couple of months back when we met, I brought up the point of possibly sending out, for lack of a better term, a little ambassador team from Powhatan County to places that we can identify businesses in the region or state, or even out-of-state, that maybe through the database at VEDP or something like that, we get wind that someone's looking for a place to land, and we think they might be a complimentary good fit for Powhatan. Has there been any movement or discussion on that to maybe either, you know, if it's a, if we need to court a really important business, let's say, you know, to send the chair of the board and, you know, yourself or Roxanne, maybe somebody from the economic development, you know, the EDA, et cetera? Has there been any discussion or movement on that? Do you, have you thought about that more, and do you think we should maybe do something like that in the future?
Yeah, and that actually was a brief mention of that in the slide later, but we'll talk about it now.
Oh, good.
And that's a common question we get, is, you know, are you going out and, outside of Powhatan and trying to bring businesses here?
Right.
We do, to agree, just trying to market ourselves and make us attractive, so if somebody looks here, it's somewhere they would want to be, but we're not actively going out, meeting with the company and telling them, "You should move here." But I think we can do that in a very limited, very targeted way, so if there's a certain business or sector that we know, for whatever reason, we have the attributes, we could really be successful with that, then there could be a place for that. I think it would be helpful to have some dialogue, and we've talked about a workshop between our EDA and the board to talk about what is the consensus around whether we want to target, so if we go out, we make sure, you know, it's something that the county, the board, the citizens do want us to bring here.
Right.
So I would say in a limited, very, very specific way, yes. I wouldn't recommend that, like some localities, we go to trade shows or we fly around to different countries, meeting with companies, just trying to court them and hope they come here, you know, that's a low return on investment, and we don't own any industrial parks or anything, some locations that do that, they own the land, so it's a little easier, they can control it. We would be ultimately just coming back and pointing them to private land. So that kind of recruitment, I would say, no, it wouldn't be right for us, but some very, again, limited, very targeted, yeah. So that's something we've talked about and something, you know, we would like some direction from the board and work with the EDA and the board on that.
Well, and I just want to give you a thank you. I think you started in the right way of spinning the plates we already have, visiting the businesses that exist, encouraging them, giving them ways to expand, prosper, more, more employment, et cetera. I think that's the base of the pyramid, and as you go up, so, good, just want to make sure it's on the radar.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
McDonald's under construction. Three Crosses is ceiling, opened here in the Village, they've been doing great. Millet Fine Creek, they added the bakery kitchen onto their existing commercial kitchen, allowed them to expand some of their offerings in the provision store and with the events they host there. Lakeside at Welch's Estate, as you recall, last year you approved the CUP for this one, so it's our latest wedding venue that's operated in the county, and I don't know if you can see it, but bottom right there, they added recently a fully enclosed glass structure for outdoor, soundproof, weather, air-conditioned and heated, so that they can have more events. Fairview Farms, one of our great existing wedding and event venues, they converted one of their dairy barns into lodging and more event space, so that's a first-class rural venue. Mandicant Town End, again, another CUP for event space that you all approved last year, will be getting developed in the future. Other Carpet Upholstery, previously a mobile home-based business, moved into an existing building, so now they have a brick-and-mortar location on 60. DRP Collision added an additional paint booth, also brought in Enterprise Rent-A-Car into their business. Fortunado moved into a new building in Oak Bridge. Rocky Forlato, this one just opened, Auto Service Shop off of 60 behind Village Concepts. Car Wash, you all approved the CUP for that, so that'll be going through the site plan phases shortly. Shalom Farms significantly expanded the acreage they're farming and also added additional staff to their operation last year. Habitat for Humanity, EDA owns that property, leased it to them and redid that to repair that aging structure and bring some use into it. And then looking at some of our ongoing projects, so currently, staff were tracking and working on 64 potential projects. 28 of those are existing businesses in the county that they're looking to expand or they're looking to relocate, they've outgrown their existing location, so that's an opportunity for additional capital investment, additional employment, but it's also an opportunity for them to leave the county, because when they've outgrown their space, they're going to look around, so we're talking with them and trying to find them a place here in the county, so we keep good existing businesses here. And then 36 that we're talking to are either new businesses that don't exist, somebody's trying to start up a business and wants it to be in the county, or this is an existing business in the region that wants to relocate to Powhatan or maybe open a second branch and have that be in Powhatan. And then just look at the sources of all of those project leads, so the most common one is the owner themselves reaching out to us or our planning department and saying, "I've got this idea, I want to relocate my business, help me find a place," or "What's the process I need to go through permitting-wise?" Then second to that would be uncovering those opportunities through our business visits, so when Roxanne and I are going out and meeting with businesses, finding out that they have an opportunity to grow in the next six months or the next two years, and again, trying to start early with that process to make sure when they do grow, they do it here in the county and don't leave. Then 13% are brokers, where the owner has contracted with a broker, so they contact us. Most of the time with that, they've probably already identified a specific location, so then it's about what is the permitting that would be necessary to do that. And then a small sliver there, that's VEDP, so that's the state bringing us projects, and typically they'll say, "We have a business, it's looking to the whole region, let us know which available buildings or sites could fit that." That's the smallest sliver, but I think that will continue to grow. One issue we've had is our representative to the state agency has changed, it's kind of been in an interim position over the past couple of years. We now finally have one full-time dedicated representative. She worked with Hanover's Economic Development Agency for many years, so a great, well-respected professional, so I think now that we have that permanent, stable relationship that understands the county and our program, we'll probably get more leads coming from the state. Just a few more slides here. So Roxanne and I and volunteers conducted nearly 100 visits with existing Powhatan businesses to find out whether there are issues, whether the opportunities to do more business in the county, employment issues, utilities, more opportunities for expansion. And some of the findings from those visits, you know, one, we want to know, "Why are you here? How can we replicate your success with other businesses?" And one thing we hear the most, "Why is your business here? They already had ties to Powhatan, maybe they're from here, or their spouse is from here, or they moved here and then brought their business home." They, proximity to 88, obviously that's huge, it connects you to transportation for the whole region. The sense of community, just the feel of knowing people and people watching out for each other was something we heard again and again. Safety, many businesses moved from areas where they didn't feel safe, they had break-ins, robberies, theft, moved here and aren't experiencing those issues. And then lack of B-pole, that's a big draw for many of them. Some of the issues we've heard, one, workforce, and that's being experienced statewide, nationwide with the low unemployment. Almost seems like everybody we meet with has the opportunity to expand or hire, but they're having a hard time finding people, and everybody kind of is right now. And we also, you know, our rural charm is a big draw for us, it also, the perception that we're far away is hard, too. For some of them, they might be willing to drive just as far into Midlothian, but there's a sense that if they're in Powhatan, it's too far out for them to drive, so sometimes we fight that stigma, or our businesses do, in trying to attract employees and saying, "Well, that's too far," so they deal with that sometimes. Signage, our planning department's done a great job of, as we've talked about, and you all have helped us with, cleaning up the signage on 60, it's a lot more attractive, but we have heard from some businesses that when they want to do things, there are less options. Do a good job with working with them on the temporary signage, making sure it's aesthetically pleasing, it's not out there forever, but as you all look to probably update the sign ordinance over this year, might be some more opportunities there. And then the last issue is just the lack of available, ready sites, so when somebody is ready to outgrow their space and ready to move into the next, available buildings that are ready to go and ready to occupy, we have a lack of some of those.
Brett.
Madam Chair. Brett, we've heard the signage issue before. My understanding was the Planning Commission was going to be working on that. Do we have a timeframe when that's going to be worked on, so we make sure we can communicate to the business community? I did sit on that committee many years ago, and it can be pretty contentious, you know, to try to accomplish the goals that are both, you know, attractive, but yet not controlling so much that, you know, you're not allowing to, you know, advertise effectively. So is there a planned timeframe, because I know we've talked about this thing for a while as a board, so.
We actually have some staff right now at a conference about signage and the regulation signage, so we're going to start talking about it.
Okay. Just don't want it to drag and drag, as we tend to drag some things out, thank you.
And then last slide, just kind of looking at the rest of 2019, I believe we'll continue to see strong economic growth and more opportunities for business expansion in the county. Expand our business visits with volunteers, that's one thing we're going to look at. As I mentioned, we have 565 brick-and-mortar business locations, with just Roxanne and I, there's no way we can, in a meaningful way, get out to all of them or even probably half of them. So one thing we've been working with is getting some volunteers who can go out and meet on our behalf, get information from the businesses, and if there's issues, then we'll follow up with them. And we actually, just this morning, Roxanne and one of our volunteers did our first business walk in South Creek, where they went door-to-door and checked in with some of the businesses and learned some good things from that and made some good new business connections. So that's something we're going to do more, working with volunteers, and if anybody here is interested in that, let Roxanne or I know, we'd love to talk to them about that opportunity. And Mr. Norvig, we talked about looking at targeted recruitment of businesses, that's something we'll be talking with you more about, to make sure it's done in a way that's in line with what the board would like to see. And then, again, talking about the lack of available sites, the county facilitating the development of additional sites, like Oak Bridge, for example, that's one of our prime sites. It's just a couple of developments away from being completely built out and done, so then that's great, where's the next one going to be? A big step in that is the comp plan that you all have worked on, it identifies some locations for light industrial economic zones, more commercial, so that would be a big first step, and then the county going forward and working with private landowners to try and develop more sites, so we have the next inventory of available sites ready. So that's the summary of my presentation, happy to answer any questions, and again, we have several members of the EDA here as well, if you have any questions for them.
I have another one. Thanks, Brett. I kind of heard it, but I'm not sure, are you saying, or do you think it's a good idea for the county to actually purchase from private landowners one or two parcels to be pad-ready? So if you weren't meaning that, what do you think of that idea?
Probably not that, not, at least not yet, certainly. Many localities do that. It's certainly costly to do that. More, I would say, facilitating the private development of that is what I would see us doing first, and again, that starts with the comp plan, which you all have taken the steps in revising that and drafting that, just needs to be adopted, which, you know, I believe it will be soon, so that's the first step. Other things we would look at, and we currently do this, talking with people who- Other things we would look at, and we currently do this, talking with people who have land and saying, "Here's all the things we're seeing. Here's the 64 leads we're currently talking to" and letting them know the type of space, square footage, docks, ceiling height, all those things. So they know what we're seeing in the market. And we have one person in particular that's going to likely build some spec space based on some of that feedback. So trying to encourage them that we see the signs, but here's what we need to be able to sell. The county could look at Virginia Business Sites Program. That's a grant program where you could elevate the tiers of available sites. So the state will rank sites one to five. One being it's just zone land, it's a forest, it's going to take a whole lot of work to get done. To a five that is fully ready, it's got the roads, it's got the sewer permits are ready. You just need to start construction. So that's a program where the county could match moving projects up that tier system. So we might have a site that's a two that has the necessary zoning, might have a site plan, but wetland surveys haven't been done, or there's no plan, no actual construction plan to bring utilities. So we could get the wetland delineation done or actually plan the utilities and elevate that site up to a three or a four to make it more attractive for development. That would be a lower-cost way to do it. The county could consider putting options on properties. One issue we have in working with strictly private development is we could have a great site and find a good user for it and say they want $400,000 for the site. Then when you show up overnight, they could say, "Well, now I want $700,000. We don't control the price." The county can potentially, and again, some successfully do this, put first options on properties, key properties. So when we have a user, we can go there and with that option in place, control the price. We wouldn't actually purchase it. We would just hold it for that private entity to purchase. But that's a way that you can, again, control the price of some of the sites in key areas without actually purchasing themselves. So I wouldn't see us going to the full extent of buying and developing land. Currently, there's certainly more we can do with the private sector, facilitate that before we went into that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to remind everybody that this department has really been up and running for only one year. But I think that based on this presentation, you can see that Brett and Roxanne have been extremely busy, very thorough, professional, laid the groundwork for a very successful future for this function. And I certainly want to thank the EDA for taking that long view of doing the study necessary to understand what a successful program ought to look like and then, you know, supporting it as it moved into a fully functioning county department. So I want to send them my appreciation and thank you, Brett and Roxanne. Great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, that gets us back on track. We're going to move to 10B, item 10B. This we removed from the consent agenda. Mr. Williams, the Founder's Bridge Utility Resolution.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The reason I wanted it to be taken off the consent agenda, I wanted the public to be aware of what we were doing, why we were doing it, and to make sure that we understood what was going to be the process for the acquisition of Founder's Bridge Utility Company. So Ted, with this resolution that we're going to be sending to the State Corporation Commission, it basically just tells them that we are moving forward with the acquisition of the utility company. But we're going to be doing due diligence as well. Where do we stand with the due diligence?
Thank you, Mr. Williams. And just to build on that, it also, not only does it ask the State Corporation Commission to begin a process of evaluating the approval of the sale of this private utility to the county, which is a permission that needs to be granted for that sale to happen, but it also notifies Chesterfield County of the board's serious consideration of this because they would also be involved in approving the assignment of their water sales agreement from Founder's Bridge Utility Company to Powhatan County. So a couple of balls get rolling. We do absolutely reserve for the board of supervisors here the full flexibility to make that decision as to whether to move forward based on a full due diligence review. And so at this point, we're, we have easements in hand that we're reviewing. We have a draft sales or acquisition agreement. The county is not anticipating that we're going to be paying for these assets. We are acquiring the maintenance records. I have not seen those. I understand that some have been turned over, but that's kind of the next big piece for us. We want to see what those maintenance records look like. And then Ms. Carter's contacted her, some colleagues in the utility business who do these kind of acquisitions, to see if we can use their process for reviewing all those documents and kind of go through what kind of a checklist they go through. Or maybe have them do the review as a third party to make sure that, you know, we know what we're getting, that we properly protect ourselves and our public so that we don't buy a pig in a poke, as you will. And so that could be in the form of hiring a third-party engineering firm, or it could be another utility that, maybe a public utility, that's willing to do that kind of work for us. And we don't have a selected third party yet, but that is something that we're actively pursuing.
Well, thank you. I had talked to Ted and Ramona prior to the meeting, and we had discussed that. So I thought it was important for the public to understand what we were doing and how we were proceeding going forward with the acquisition. I want to make sure, you know, as Ted pointed out just now, that we're asking the right questions and we're getting the right information. It's not every day that the county takes over a utility system. I think this is a, well, I know it's a first for us in the county. So if there is sources out there that we can use, as Ted said, you know, other localities who have gone through this process, they have a punch list that they look for, what is it that you need to have? What kind of information? What type of maintenance, repair records, those types of things? I want to make sure, like Ted said, that we don't end up getting a system that's going to end up costing us. And that's the last thing all of us want. So thank you, Ted.
Yes, sir.
All righty. That takes us into...
So, Madam Chair, do we need to approve anything since we moved?
We need a vote on that.
We do need a vote on...
We pulled it off the consent agenda.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
Right, it is a resolution. Thank you, Mr. Melton. I apologize.
You're welcome.
So would you like to make that motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah. Is that a roll call? No. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. I'm going to clarify. It is a resolution, and I believe that that does require a...
Yeah, it's Resolution R. 2019-21. Okay.
So that's your motion to approve and...
Yep, so we just need to roll call it now.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Norvig.
Aye.
Mr. Melton.
Aye.
Mr. Tucker.
Aye.
Mrs. Campbell.
Aye.
So that passes five to zero, and it's R. 2019-21 for the record.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to 11A, New Business, Quarterly Financial Report as of March 31st, 2019. Ms. Schuber.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We are technically a little bit farther than three-quarters of our way through fiscal year 19. It is rapidly going. As I do with each quarterly report, I try to give you a benchmark. We are at about 25%, especially on the expenditure side. We monitor that. I use those benchmarks to monitor the spending and where everyone falls and everyone is in, where they should be at this point in the year. The revenue side, there are some, just for the public, there's some, when we say 25%, there's certain revenues that at this point in the year, we would only have collected half, such as real estate, taxes, your first half of your personal property, as those are due on June 5th, as well as your motor vehicle licenses. The revenues are trending around where we, they should be. We always monitor our local sales tax and our consumption and consumer utility as those can change, I would say, at any moment. But they are steady as where they should be currently. And I'm ready to answer any questions you may have on the current March 31st quarterly report.
Questions, gentlemen?
Pretty self-explanatory. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so this brings us to our public hearing. Our first public hearing is going to be on the, let me switch to the last page and get the official language. Public hearing on the fiscal year 2020 operating budget, five-year capital improvement plan, and real property tax rate.
So, Madam Chair, as is the custom, I'll give a quick orientation to the budget using the PowerPoint that's in the packet. I've certainly been warned that this is the opportunity to put everybody to sleep. I also am interested in not having this game go too long. Game seven between the Caps and the Hurricanes is on tonight, so I'd like to maybe at least catch the third period.
Well, and to point out, this is not an action item tonight.
That's correct. This is a public hearing, so we're going to orient the audience to the budget and then take public comments. The board does not need to take any action. In fact, cannot take action on the budget until a minimum period of time is passed. The next board meeting is scheduled for May 9th, and that's currently on our calendar for board consideration of action on the budget. So if I could get the slide up to 276, I'll try to say next slide as often as I can and as quickly as I can. Very good. Next slide. So we'll quickly try to orient you to the current fiscal year estimates, the guidelines that were used to develop the budget, budget policies, our revenue and expenditures, and then the CIP, and then at the end, there's a separate discussion of fire service options. And I'm going to do my best to get through this in about 10, 15 minutes, as soon as I can. So current fiscal year estimates, next slide, the yellow line, next slide. On here shows our estimated total general fund, our total revenues and expenditures, and shows that the fund balance estimated at the end of this fiscal year would be $14,170,000, and that we would be comparable at the end of the next fiscal year. So that's showing a relatively balanced budget, and that's our sort of benchmark of fiscal health is that fund balance. Next slide, we'll talk about budget development guidelines, next slide. So the board had a retreat a couple falls ago, and the four top guidelines were economic development, quality of life, housing choice, and broadband, along with longstanding commitments to quality public education, our social safety net, and Powhatan's unique sense of place. Next slide. We also gave direction to me through the budget development guidelines for no-tax increase, capture the natural growth from development for the board's goals. If cuts or revenues are necessary, give the board options, and then present a separate plan for enhanced fire and rescue services. Next slide. Specifically, budget guideline 6A was proposed steps to make permanent the Advanced Life Support Service Level Enhancement pilot that we began last year. So that was adding a second, fully-staffed ambulance so that we could have two ambulances stood up 24/7. We started that mid-year using EMS recovery funds, and we wanted to make that permanent. Next slide, 6B was to propose steps to continue the daytime staffing at Huguenot Company 2 and Fine Creek Company 4, which were shifted to Company 4 and restarted in 19. We moved a few people around because of the ambulance piece and trying to be more efficient, and that's where we ended up, to continue daytime staffing at those two companies and build that into the base budget. So next slide. And finally, budget guideline number four. This was in the budget development guidelines adopted by the board in January. Present a concept plan to the board whereby enhanced fire and rescue services may be achieved through the use of a fire district tax strategy. This concept plan should not be a part of the base budget, but should be an option for board consideration and deliberation. Next slide. So how do we do? Strategic priorities are more or less funded. The first one was economic development. We have sustained that program, currently funding it. And as you just saw from the presentation by Mr. Shardine, it's doing very well. We also funded that goal of the pilot program for the ALS expansion, the EMS expansion. So that's in the base budget with one small asterisk, which we'll hit later. Fire and rescue staffing was separately presented at a March 11th workshop. That is not included in the base budget. 911 operational increases were included in the base budget since they just moved into their new facility. And May 1st, we do plan to have an open house for the board and other invited guests, and we'll be talking about public open houses at some point in time. It's really great to see that project successfully conclude. And then the Eastern Convenience Center is funded through your financing. That's one of those quality-of-life enhancements. We hear people, you know, wanting to be more convenient there. Unfortunately, there were some things I couldn't fund. Library service enhancements, we're not, I didn't have enough revenue to do that. The recreation master plan, there are a number of items that were requested. We are funding development of an implementation plan so that the Parks and Rec Advisory Board can work on that, but not actual implementation. The good news is, though, we do have a number of ball field improvements. Lighting work in particular that were funded in your fall debt financing, and so those are ongoing. Broadband, we didn't have any extra funding in there. We're going to have a workshop on that in June, and we have some exciting new news on that. But we'll talk about that at the workshop. And then housing choice, I just don't think we've reached a policy outcome on that. So we don't really have any funding directed at, in changing that goal. Employee pay and benefits, there was a small health insurance increase, which we absorbed on the county side, so employees will not see increases in the health plan. 3% pay increase for all employees was aligned with the school system and driven largely by the governor's budget and the General Assembly's desire to give school employees a 5% pay increase. So if you stretch that over two years, the state requirement was that you give at least a 2% pay increase last year and then 3% pay increase this year for a total of five. That gets you at access to the maximum state contribution. If you cut it in any way, then you lose the state side as well. So that's in alignment with all of the peer counties in the region. Everyone's at least at three, and one or two are actually higher. There's also a second half of our structural pay plan adjustment that the board is aware of, and we implemented half of that last January. We'll implement the second half of that as well in January. So there's a quick summary. Next slide of the money. No changes to the VRS situation. The total on health insurance increase is $25,006. New positions, $82,000. Those are pretty much part-time. $313,000 for salary changes, and then the raise, $306. Next slide, budget guidelines, school funding. We continue to apply the, it's a little bit sexist to call it a gentleman's agreement, so I don't know, what do we call it? A colleague agreement? We have an agreement to roughly split 52-48 with the schools. It's not in writing, but we did that again. New revenue came out of that with natural growth, $301,000, that goes to the schools. And then we had significant debate about the Commonwealth's impacts and their tax rate and whether they're going to fund standards of quality improvements or not. There was a request for an additional school resource officer. I was not able to fund that. We're hoping that there might be some new programs or grants. There is expanded CIP support for the schools. They're doing their energy upgrades. And that's, you know, a pretty important piece of their ongoing capital maintenance. Next slide is the school transfer, so that's broken out in case anybody, you know, feels like reading it. Budget guidelines after that, next page, is general guidance. Implement performance management, enhance public engagement, ensure long-term sustainability. Present the CIP at the same time as the budget, which we've done. We considered fleet leasing. We've not engaged in that beyond our large capital vehicles like buses and fire trucks. We are evaluating ERP systems. That's our enterprise resource planning, our big financial system. We have selected a vendor to help us with the evaluation of those systems. And our actual next week, I think, is our first kickoff meeting. The social safety net is maintained, and we continue to explore partnerships. Next slide, performance management. This is a sample slide. Every department now has... a breakout of their personnel operating capital and debt service, and then a summary of their people, and then their key performance metrics. So we'll see that in the budget document for all departments. Next slide. Maintain general fund, fund balance of 15% of operating revenues. That's one of our mantras. We live by that. Next, net tax-supported debt as a percentage of assessed value shall not exceed 4%. That's a Board policy. The next one is very important, and we talked about it when we issued the debt. The ratio of tax-supported debt as a percentage of total governmental operating expenditure shall not exceed 15%, with 12% being the optimal level, and we do have a plan how to move to 12 over the next two, three, four years. And that will be something we'll talk about a little bit more as we get into the refinancing over the next few months. All fund budgets must be balanced. We want to preserve our AA+ bond rating, which is about the highest you can get without a more diverse economy. And then fully fund all debt leases and contracts. Next slide. So our revenue estimates show that about a 2%, 2.6% increase will anure to our coffers through the current flat tax rate, and that's a 0.8% rise in real estate, a 9.5% rise in personal property and other taxes, 1.3. Next slide. Utility fund estimates show the following numbers. Next slide. Total budget, all funds excludes the state school funds, and you get the adopted FY 2019 at $82 million, the proposed FY 2020, 35098. So we, I'm not liking that chart, so I'm just going to skip it. Charlie can explain it. Next slide. Proposed expenditures. General fund, $55 million, an increase of 2.6. And so on the county side, that shows debt service increase of 324, capital projects down 192, personnel 728 up, operating 378 up. The schools get an additional $301,000. We reduce contingency 24,000, and we change in other transfers 116,000. Next slide. Departmental changes. These are the highlights of what was funded and what was not. So we did fund clerk of court certifications. We fund a part-time associate in the county administrator's office. We fund a part-time increase in our existing animal control officers who end up spending too much time with overtime, so we need to right that. Emergency management, a slight increase of part-time pay there. It's currently a part-time position, will remain so. Community development tech has been very helpful in getting all the files squared away and handling the volume increase that we have, so we'd like to have a little part-time funding there. Director of Elections has asked for a full-time staff person. We were not able to fund it full year, but we did fund it half year, and that'll be something that we'll have to pick up after that. Election officials, we haven't given them a raise in several years, so there's more money for that. And then, as I mentioned, the structural adjustment, the Phase 2 of that implementation is funded. And then we fund the daytime staffing for Companies 2 and 4, and the ALS pilot is built into the base budget. On the next slide, we show that we fund our HR software. If anybody's been online to apply for a job with Powhatan, you'll see we have a much more streamlined online process using a product that's used nationwide and is very accessible and has a lot of capability. We funded tuition reimbursement program, which had run out of funds. We funded 911 operating communications increase in operations due to their new facility. We also gave Public Works additional funding because they'll be opening the new, or the gym, the repurposed gym at the old Pocahontas Middle, and also moving into Skaggs Road when the schools move out. Also, the courthouse expansion, and the field lights are bigger, so they have more electricity demands. We gave them some funds there. Next slide. Recycling contract went up. That's a national problem. Nobody knows what to do with plastics. China stopped taking them, so a lot of the contracts we're in on that have adjusted for that. As you've probably read in the paper, Chesterfield County is thinking about not even doing it, so we're trying to keep an eye on that, and we're right now sticking with it as part of the Central Virginia Waste Management Authority. IT enhancements, we did fund some of them, not all of them. We need to be mindful of that. There's just a lot going on in cybersecurity. We want to, we don't want to end up with ransomware or anything like that, so we do have to pay attention to it. We did fund IT, in the IT side, our Open Gov budget transparency module, and we're working to implement that, so we'll have a lot more capability to present reports and share with the public. We had to increase our GIS contract due to the size of our organization. New voting, not voting machines, but the computers, the poll books, we did fund those. Those were a security risk and outdated, and then we funded some increases in social services. Departmental change overview that were unfunded. We were not able to fund career ladders for IT department or inspections, but we are looking at those. We'll try to work those in in a future year. Clerk of Court asked for some reclasses. We didn't fund those. We didn't fund a clerk of court part-time position, or media technicians, additional circulation aid at the library, the SRO that I already mentioned, a couple of dispatchers at 911. We didn't fund those. We didn't fund court security part-time, and we, the fire and rescue issues were moved to an upcoming workshop, and we'll talk about that at the end. We also were not able to fund recreation techs for the new gym, but we're going to move folks from the ball fields over there if we can, depending on the outcome of our tournament discussion. The clerk of court wanted some capital outline we didn't fund. We were not able to fully fund an enhanced volunteer incentive, though we have some funding from the previous grant. Public Works facilities, we did have to cut them back on their fully-funded request. The EDA was interested in some funding, and I wasn't able to provide that. We weren't able to provide funding for a small area plan that would follow on from your adoption of the comprehensive plan. We had to cut professional services in IT. We had to cut the security audit from IT. So those are some of the things I was not able to fund. Capital improvement program, this will just take a minute. Next slide. There's the summary. Public Works got 410,000. Parks and Rec got 60. Utilities got 22. The total CIP was 492. The other capital, which is mostly vehicles, is 429 for an addition to the CIP of $921,000. As you know, the CIP is a rolling multi-year plan, and so there's significant funding in it from prior years, mostly from debt financing, and so those projects are multi-year and will continue. Next slide. Before we talk into about the fire proposal, I want to state publicly, I did not approve a $500,000 concession stand. I know that folks on Facebook love to talk about things that they don't know about, but I didn't fund it. I also said I thought it was overpriced, and we need to do something different. But it still shows up in the CIP as a need, because the girls are playing softball down there, and it's a pretty bad concession stand, while other folks at the new middle school and at Fighting Creek Park have a beautiful concession stand. We can't, you know, treat the girls in a lesser way, so we've got to figure out how we're going to solve that problem. I didn't recommend a $500,000 concession stand, but hopefully, as a community, we can come together and build something that's nicer than what we have and be the better for it. This next piece is just a quick highlight of the fire district proposal. As you heard me say earlier, I was directed by the Board to present a separate plan on how to deal with fire and rescue service expansions outside the budget. I did that. I did not present that as something inside the budget, and I presented a balanced budget with no tax increase. But if we're going to do some enhancements, those things would cost money, and all we did here was just try to outline what would happen if we tried to meet the Board's adopted standards. So orientation, level of service, county comparison, staffing proposals, and then all be done. So orientation, real quickly, if you go to the map, and thanks for following me so well down there. I'm looking at my, you're doing a great job. So there's the five different fire box areas, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, different colors represent the fire response zones for the different companies. And then, of course, the EMS responses countywide. Next slide. This is a heat map that shows the EMS calls for 2018. The brighter colors mean where more of the calls came from. Surprise, surprise, most of the calls came along the 60 corridor, and then there's a bright pink area up in the north, and that's basically the state prison area. Next slide. So, level of service. Next slide. There it is. Yellow. That's the biggest call volume. And what is that? EMS. Next slide. I'm blowing through these because these were already presented to the public at the briefing the chief did on our annual report. Next slide shows engine company responses. These are numbers of, in blue dispatched to calls, and then in red, incidents of no response. The numbers are along the bottom. Company 1 responded 97% of the time. Company 2, 72% of the time. Company 4, 67% of the time. Company 5, 67% of the time. And Company 3, 41% of the time. Next slide. Assembly of force. This is getting six personnel on the scene in the first 14 minutes. We did that 37% of the time in '18. We did that 40% of the time in '17, and 43% of the time in '16. So, you know, that's kind of the level we got. Next slide. This shows the amount of coverage that county personnel, meaning full-time or part-time, and contractors that the county pays for, cover the EMS calls, and basically, it's around the clock except for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday evenings. Next slide. And there's the, when we moved into the two ambulance staffing pilot, it was started a year ago in April, this slide shows you that the rescue squad was able to staff their side of that deal on those four weeknights, a good amount of the time. But as you can see, the red bar shows when they were not able to do it, and that's just having one ambulance up instead of two. And so that probably was what prompted the rescue squad to ask the county if we could help with the second unit, which is then when the Board approved the contingency money for the $45,000 to finish this current fiscal year out with additional contract help for that second ambulance. Next slide. County comparisons. Next slide. There it is. So this shows us EMS and total calls. EMS is in red, total calls is in blue. We look pretty similar to Goochlin. Denwitty's a little more. Amelia and Cumberland are a lot less. Louisa is a lot more. New Kent and Prince George are maybe comparable, slightly more. Next slide. Staffing by comparison, I'm not going to try to read this slide. If you want to look at the presentation, you'll see who's got how many full-time people, when they work, part-time people, how many supervisors, and all that. Next slide. This is pretty relevant. Board members asked, how much do we spend on our fire and rescue budget? As you can see from this slide, we spend 2.82% of our budget, which is less by a lot than Louisa, Goochlin, Hanover, New Kent, Orange, Cumberland, and Amelia. Fluvana is a tiny bit less than us. When you convert that to pennies in the tax rate, we spend 4.6. Louisa spends 9.9. Goochlin, 9.9. Hanover, 14.7. New Kent, 13.1. Orange, 13.4. Cumberland, 9.2. And Amelia, 8.3. So only Fluvana spends less than us, pennies of the tax rate, 4.2. Next, yes, sir?
May I ask the audience a question? Are y'all able to read these slides? You know, I'm having a hard time reading them myself. We've got the books up here, but some of this detailed information, it would be awfully hard, I think, for y'all to be able to see it in the audience. And the reason I'm asking that question is because if we need to change, and I think we're planning on changing.
Yes, sir.
You know, the screens, so that y'all will have a better view of what it is we're presenting. But I know some of the slides, I couldn't even read from, you know, my position up on stage, so I was curious as to what the audience was experiencing.
Thank you, Mr. Williamson. Just for those of you who hadn't heard already, John Wood, our IT director, has some access to what we call PEG funds, which are funds that you pay through, if you have cable. So if you have Comcast or Verizon, Xfinity, Verizon, you're going to have a little thing on your bill that says PEG, and that's public educational governmental funding, and we have some funding. We're going to change these screens out to have bigger ones, and change these mics out so they have on/off buttons and lights, and we're going to improve the streaming equipment and the sound control, so hopefully, that'll give you a better experience as you sit in these meetings.
These charts are all on?
Online.
All of these are online, and there are copies of a lot of it in the book in the back. I'm almost done. Staffing proposal that Chief Singer brought forward to meet our budget development guideline. Let's show the next one. Current proposed budget. That is what is in my proposed budget. It includes continuing the ALS pilot program for two transport units, 24/7, 365, asterisk. Includes continuing the daytime single staffing at Company 2 and 4. Maintains current level of service countywide. And then, subsequent to the budget presentation, the rescue squad requested additional support. That's the asterisk, asterisk. So that left us $180,000 budget gap. Logic, $45,000 is what it costs us to run that second ambulance by contract for three months. Multiply that times the rest of, a whole new year, and you get $180,000. I was recommending that we solve that by using a fund balance transfer. That's taking it out of our savings. I don't recommend that we have an unbalanced budget on a regular basis, but that's relatively small to the whole budget, and hopefully, we can get back on track the following year with new revenue from some of these businesses opening. There'll be a revaluation. That happens every two years, and we can kind of reconcile that. So that's my adopted, recommended budget for adoption with the proposed current tax rate. And so what do you get for that? This is, the next slide is a map that shows you that weekdays only, 81% of parcels would be covered. It's a mix of transport and first responder, and this is daytime only. Okay? So that's what you get for the current level of service. Next slide. This is what you get at night. 63% of the county can be reached in the 14-minute response time that the Board has adopted as a goal. 63%. All right? Next slide. So what would it take to meet the Board's goal? The adopted goal, which was adopted by the Board of Supervisors in 2015, significantly before I got here, is that the Powhatan County Rescue and Fire Department, I guess that should be FRD, not RFD, Fire and Rescue Department, will arrive on scene to 90% of all advanced life support emergencies and priority basic life support, emergency medical service incidents within 14 minutes and 30 seconds of being dispatched with an EMS transport unit. So that's adopted Board policy from 2015. Next slide. How do you do that? Well, we did some mapping exercises, and this slide shows you that 92% of all the parcels in the county can be reached if we, well, this shows you that if we have people at these stations, then we can do that 92% of the time. And so we'd have folks from main station and Company 1, 2, and 4. If they're people in station, they can, the drive time would allow them to reach 92% of the parcels covered. Next slide. So how do we get people in the stations? This proposal is 24/7, 365 staffing. There are other ways to get people in stations, but this is what it would cost if you paid people. Three people per shift at Company 1. That allows them to either go with an engine with three people or a transport unit with two people. So the folks would be firefighter slash EMTs. That would cost $607,000. Next slide.
Wait a minute.
Yep.
Sorry. I'm on page 55. Company 1.
Yes, sir.
The proposed staffing, three per shift?
Yes, sir.
I see what you're saying. Is it shift 24-hour period?
Yes, 24/7, yes.
Is that what you're hanging up, Carson? It's three people, and this is where I've been getting confused, too.
Right.
You've got positions, and then you've got people that staff the positions. So if you say you have a 24-hour, seven days a week person, that means that you've got three eight-hour shifts within a 24-hour period.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You had the same confusion I did.
So three people per shift basically means you've got to hire nine people to cover 24/7, 365. 24/7/365. So, next slide shows how that breaks out. We have current staffing now already paid, two lieutenants and four firefighters. So, you'd have to add the amount that would get you to that total of three lieutenants and six firefighters for a total of nine personnel, three per shift. And the PPE for them, the personal protective equipment, gets you a total of $607,000. That would only be a net increase of 224 because we're already paying for six people currently. Let's move to company two. The next slide. At Huguenot, you'd have the same basic configuration. But you also have the ALS QRV there, Quick Response Vehicle. So, that totals a little bit more. 673-651. So, next slide. There's the cost. If you hired nine new people, six firefighters, three lieutenants, for 24/7/365 coverage. And then, the ALS provider there is covered by the EMS billing. That's already in the base budget, so it's not added here. Next slide. Macon, company three, not proposing any changes. Next slide. Fine Creek, company four. There, instead of putting three people 24/7/365, we thought two would be adequate because the lieutenant, there'd be two lieutenants on duty 24/7, one at company one, one at company two, and one of them would be able to supervise the Fine Creek unit. So, we try not to add extra staffing where we didn't need to. So, that proposes two. And that means they can either take a rescue unit for a medical call or they can take an engine. This is probably a good point for me to remind everybody that two people on an engine does not make an adequate team to go to the scene of an incident. So, we would clearly, absolutely need to rely on volunteers to make up an adequate team. If they had to do an interior attack, they'd need two people inside, two people outside minimum. We'd prefer to have six. So, even with two paid, you still need to have two to six or more folks to come, maybe to bring the tanker, maybe to bring other equipment, maybe to implement safety protocols, to give people a break, whatever. So, this number of people just gets us to the scene. Or it lets us run an ambulance. It does not solve our total fire staffing by any measure. Next slide. And that just shows you the cost there, which is six firefighters because it's two per shift. So, that's six for 24/7 coverage for a total of $442,000. And then, we wouldn't need the part-timer there, so that's a net out. Next slide. Deep Creek, company five, currently has one QRV or one on the engine. So, we have one existing staffing person there weekday to help get the engine or QRV out to the western part of the county. And that's proposed to stay the same. Next slide. The rescue squad, main building. That's where we have the coverage currently provided by the county and paid staff and/or contractor on every, you know, every day except for Tuesday, Wednesday, or Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday evening, one unit. Next slide. With all these people, you know, we only have one full-time paid chief, our current. Other assistants are part-time. So, we would reconfigure to have a full-time assistant chief plus a captain to help with training and other duties. Next slide. That's the cost. We also show some net adding and subtracting of part-time because if we have these full-time people, then we don't need as many part-time people. Next slide. So, that's what we proposed. Why do we do it? Because we tried to meet the staffing or the service goal of the board from 2015, which is to cover 92% of the county, you know, in 14 minutes or less. If we base people at company one, company two, and company four, we can do that. But they have to be in station and ready to roll, otherwise the times drop off. Next slide. We proposed one idea as directed would be a fired tax district. Why? Because that might show the public what their money was going for as opposed to it's just a general tax and who knows? Is it going to pay for a $500,000 concession stand? I don't know. Is it going to pay for the county administrators? Snazzy new suit? I don't know. Now, you know. It's not really new. I was just trying to see if you were awake. This would allow you to see that your money was going specifically for the fire and rescue services. And so, we would pull the current amount of money we spent on fire and rescue out of the general fund, put it in the fire and rescue fund, and then supplement it to deliver this package of services. So, that's how we laid it out for the board. It's an option. They could certainly, you could not do this. You could do a portion of it. You could just add it to the general tax rate. Those are kind of the options. And at this point, I am done with my presentation. Next slide shows you, next slide again, the ad. And now, I am done with my orientation and I certainly encourage the public to speak as it would like to about this and advise the board of your thoughts. And I would also like to advise the board, I've reached out to the senior policy group to talk more about these options. We haven't set a date yet, but I do know that the next standing senior policy group, fire senior policy group meeting is next Wednesday. And I plan to be there.
Ted, I had a meeting with you a couple of days ago where I proposed such a meeting, where I said, I felt like I was in a circular firing squad, going around to the volunteers, going to the chief, going to you, going to my finance director, and trying to put information to go such that I could understand it. So, I proposed to you a meeting where we had the volunteers sitting at the table with us, the board, with the chief, with staff, so that we could get buy-in. Most importantly, get the issues on the table and get buy-in for whatever it was that we determined that we needed to do short-term, what we wanted to do intermediate-term, and long-term. Because up to this point, we haven't had buy-in from the volunteers. So, thank you for that, putting together that meeting. But I want to make sure that all of us are at that meeting. Board members are sitting there so that we can hear the questions and understand the answers and get some type of idea about where we are today. Because right now, I'm struggling with that. I'm having a hard time going to different places, getting different pieces of information. So, in my opinion, this is going to be an important meeting.
When is this meeting?
Next Wednesday is the standing senior policy group meeting. It's usually held in the, this building in the basement conference room. We could move it to a larger venue if you want to.
Wednesday, May 1st.
At what time?
6:30.
I'm unable to attend.
Madam Chair, I'm out of town.
Well, I thought we were going to, Ted, when we had our discussion, we were going to notify everybody about meeting options and they would have an opportunity to chime in, like Billy and Angie, if they've already got commitments, you know, chime in and say, well, I can't meet that day.
Yeah, Mr. Williamson, I set several dates out there. We haven't had consensus yet on when we might do this. But the standing, regular meeting of the senior policy group is already scheduled. That may come before a different meeting.
Okay. If I'm confusing the two meetings, I apologize.
It's not a workshop that he's talking about.
Right. Yeah, I got it.
So, we'll talk about the workshop concept at the senior policy group. I was hopeful we might be able to get something sooner, but we're kind of out of time for something before then.
Well, I hope you will, you know, again, keep in mind that the board needs to be at this meeting, this workshop meeting, with the volunteers, with the chief, and staff. Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, it's time to open up. So, staff is done with their presentation. And so, we'll open up the public hearing on this matter. If you would like to speak to us about this, now is the time. Come on down, sign in, state your name, give your address, and we, let us hear from
Madam Chair, member of the board, thank you for this time. I appreciate it. My name is Bill DiNotti, Jr. I live at 2788 Spencerwood Drive. I'm representing Fine Creek Volunteer Fire Department, company number four. As I was trying to put together some ideas of what to speak of, I was reminded that it's draft week. And it's pretty exciting for a football fan. I'm definitely a fan of both college football and professional football. One of my most favorite coaches was Lou Holtz. I love listening to Coach Holtz talk about leadership. He said that you can have a mediocre team, but with great leadership, you can have a winning team. At the same time, you can have a great team, but with bad leadership, you won't be able to produce a winning team. Everything rises and falls on leadership. One of the founding pillars of leadership is the ability to create relationships. People skills and having the ability to communicate are key components to create long-term success in any organization. As an organization, we at company four understand that. We could have been standing before you all tonight for a very different reason altogether. We could have been helping support the tax increase and telling all the citizens why it would benefit them as well as our department. But we're not here to do that. Truth be told, we're very neutral on the tax issue altogether. We're here tonight to talk about another issue. Two weeks ago, you heard from several volunteers that mentioned several things like a lack of morale, lack of leadership, and lack of communication. At that budget workshop, two separate times, you heard that the requested assistance from different volunteer companies did not match the staffing proposal by fire and rescue. Wouldn't you know it? That during those two weeks that has passed between that budget workshop and tonight's meeting, we have not received any formal request to clear any confusion over the difference between what we requested and what was publicly proposed. We are sick and tired of the lack of communication and total inability to get buy-in from our volunteer companies in this county. Why do volunteers have to come to a public forum like this to have their voices heard? Why have three separate companies been misrepresented in a staffing proposal with no question as to what they thought about the changes? What are we supposed to say when the public, the members of the community, come to our stations or call and say, do you guys really need this much help? Are you really that bad off? Do you want us to answer honestly? Because no, we're not that bad off. And we don't need that much help. I believe that if all the companies had a voice at the table like we used to, there would be some clear communication from the top down and actually have some buy-in from all the companies, then we would be singing from the same sheet of music. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I'm David Burton. I live at 1855 Huguenot Trail. I'm a member of the Huguenot Volunteer Fire Department. I'm speaking on behalf of myself tonight. Board of Supervisors, if you think the fire department doesn't want more money or, you know, more tax increases, something to help us out or, you know, make a team effort on it, we would never say no to receiving extra help. That's not what we want at all. We have legitimate fear that our money that we're proposing for the department won't be to support volunteers at all. Unfortunately, we have poor communication with the top brass in the department. We've tried reaching out to them before and outlined what we need to make the department successful. However, the plan that has been proposed by the fire chief is not remotely similar to what we have asked for. Departments, a lot of courage to put aside our pride and ask for monetary assets is very disappointing and frustrating that it's not being taken seriously at all. We've been, we would greatly appreciate if you hear our ideas out. We feel like we aren't being heard by our own people in the department. Please try to be open-minded to our ideas because we're the ones who are actually putting in the hard work and effort and the departments. And we know what the departments need best because we're the ones there every day. Additionally, you can also maybe save a little bit of money with our plan or if you hear our ideas out and perhaps, you know, put some funds towards what the volunteers need. We have plenty of things that we need. You guys have all been by our department this week and past couple of weeks. One big example is, I know we're putting a new radio system in. We have batteries that don't last, you know, 10 minutes. And how safe is that to be inside a, you know, burning building or on scene somewhere? You know, just, we need extra help, places we can get and, you know, maybe not put all of it towards staffing or something like that. We could all use the help. I do appreciate each one of you coming by this week and hearing out our ideas at the department and speaking with some of our top representatives from our departments who we as a group all liked it and feel comfortable with speaking to you guys. We fully support our chiefs at our department. The bottom line is, I just want my voice to be heard. Let you guys know that I don't personally feel like, and some of the other members in the department feel like, we haven't heard our concerns or requests yet or had them taken seriously yet. And it's really bombing morale big time with a lot of the guys I hang out with and talk with every day. And I truly hope each and every one think through and seriously think about what you're going to do and allocate the money with you get from the tax increase. Just listen to our ideas, please. And I was always taught growing up, if you don't vote or if you don't make your voices be heard, you don't have any right to complain. So, I just want my voice to be heard. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Troy Blair, representing the Huguenot Volunteer Fire Department, the current standing district chief. The Huguenot Volunteer Fire Department should understand we do not support the, sorry, we don't support the current proposal. We have requested one person to staff our station 24 hours a day, seven days a week, which is the addition of three persons, our personnel. And this is to help staff our EMS vehicle because that's our primary call load today. And they'll also be trained to cross-staff our other apparatus as time goes on. So, the additional three people, $69,179 per person, based on the past budget numbers we were reviewing. That's $204,538. But $59,000, that $4 already being funded. So, it's only an additional $145,534. And we also support the request by the rescue squad to staff that second ambulance in our station for approximately $180,000 a year. I also want to thank all those board members that did take the time out and come and visit with us over the last couple of weeks and hear what we had to say. Thank you.
My name is Taylor Goodman, 1371 Dorset Road. I'm speaking on behalf of myself tonight. But as most of you know, I do have affiliation with fire company two, Huguenot Volunteer Fire Department. In the past two weeks, I know that the board has been pulled in a lot of different directions by the volunteers, the career staff, the union, and, you know, each with their own interest in trying to address the funding needs that have come up, each with their own concerns, from funded all the way up here to don't fund it at all. And certainly, the board has a due diligence to figure out where they lie and where that responsibility lies. So, I do want to express the appreciation that so many of the volunteers have, that the elected officials of the county have reached out to us individually and as a group and as departments to find out, hey, how do you really feel? What do we need to hear in things like that? So, hats off on that. One of the things that I think needs to be put in play and kind of reflected upon is that saying that the volunteers are still an integral part of the county is not simply lip service. It absolutely is. And when we compare ourselves to like agencies, and when I say that, I talk about community makeup, the size of the department, population, and things like that. Denwitty, Prince George, Orange, you know, any of the, Goochlin. You still see that the volunteers play an integral role in everything that occurs there on a daily basis. So, as it mentioned earlier, it's certainly, you know, one of those things where we ask for help when we need it. We don't let pride get in the way of identifying where we need help. And so, certainly, there is a need for additional help. But I don't know that it really reaches a $1.2 million threshold. That need for help could be identified by a single person, supplemented with volunteers and things like that. And certainly, there comes a threshold when we put so- And certainly, there comes a threshold when we put so many people in, salary personnel into the firehouse that simply the culture doesn't lend itself to feel like the volunteers are really needed or appreciated anymore. And certainly, that's a fine line that the board, the volunteers, the fire chief, fire administration all have to balance that. There is no magic way to figure that out and that takes a lot to figure that out. When we look at that, a lot of that is going to come into what hours do they work and what kind of shifts and schedules and things like that. And so what I do ask is that the board have the opportunity to, again, as was mentioned just a minute ago, meet with the volunteers individually, but also ensure that the volunteers have a deciding voice in the future of the fire rescue department and make sure that we do whatever we need to to implement the policies that are best going to benefit both our career staff who are in attendance tonight as well as the volunteers who are here tonight as well. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Commissioners, my name is Jeffrey Wallace, representing the Powhatan County Professional Firefighters Local 288 IAF Union, the president located at 6114 Autumn Bluff Road. I want to discuss staffing with you guys. I want you to imagine it's 3:00 AM for 24 hours shift, almost over now. You're by yourself at Company Four. You get an EMS call, Pleasant's Road. You drive there by yourself at 3:00 AM. You show up to a dark house, a road you've never been to before, and you're by yourself. Your nearest help is an ambulance coming from Company Two, 10 minutes away, and you're by yourself and you're tired and you're by yourself. How's that feel to you guys? Probably a little scary. It would to me, too. I do not want my people, my fellow firefighters, ever to sit by themselves. Let's say it's fire now all of a sudden. Company Four again, I'm sitting there, tone out a fire at 3:00 AM. See, people are trapped. I wait five minutes. No one comes. I get the engine, I go by myself. Driving back roads at night by myself and a fire engine. It's 3:00 AM again, I'm tired. I get there, once again, by myself. What can I do? Very, very little. I can watch this house burn to the ground and be helpless. I beg this board to not consider any, any, any plans that don't fully fund fire rescue. One person at a firehouse is unsafe. The union does not support us in any way. The county administrator's proposal, the fire chief's proposal helps fully fund the fire rescue department. It's safety, it's safety to the people in this audience here, the firefighters, the career, the volunteer, more importantly, the citizens. It's what we're here for, all of us. It doesn't matter if you're paid, if you're volunteer, we're here for one reason, that's the citizens. We need to stop putting pride in front of it and think about what's best for them. In the day, my parents live in Powhatan County. I want to make sure, they call 911 at 3:00 AM, someone's coming to help them out and it's a fully staffed crew. My new daughter's babysat every day in Powhatan County at my work. I want to make sure that when they call 911, something's wrong, a fully staffed crew shows up their house. One person is not a fully staffed crew anywhere, anywhere. Right now, we staff one person daytime hours through the hatties. That's unsafe as it is. Do not put people overnight in firehouses by themselves. It is incredibly unsafe and irresponsible for this board to even consider that proposal of a single person by themselves in a firehouse. I can't stress it enough, if you move forward with this fire tax, please fully fund the fire rescue department with a minimum of two, a minimum of two. Three is actually the level that is even still below the minimum, but two is at the very least. Do not sit here and fund one person at a firehouse by themselves.
Curtis Newton, 2000 Jewes Ferry Road. I don't know where to start. We heard at the March 4th meeting a balanced budget, which I guess is still part of what was presented tonight. A week later, it's increased to a three and a half since increase and a million, million and a half's increase for the, mostly for EMS, I suppose. I'm still trying to get the disconnect between those two after months and months of meetings discussing the budget. We had the million and a half or whatever it is for the fire department. We read on the local boards this week that some of the firefighters proposed $180,000 rather than a million. So I'm really confused by that. We heard the fire chief's presentation. A couple of things we've heard, even heard tonight, that the volunteers have issues with that. I heard, I read there were issues with some of the presentation response times and volunteer recruitment and retention. If, my thought, if you add a bunch more paid people, that's going to make keeping volunteers even more difficult. I'm not sure I would volunteer if I needed the guy standing next to me was a paid full-time guy. But I would like to thank the two I know of that are, I believe, are proposing of keeping the tax rate at the 88 cents or as close to it as possible. I hope we can encourage a couple more to that. I guess the thing is you could reach something in between the two and decide that we don't need, we can phase this thing in, which might be more palatable to the taxpayers. So I hope we'll come to some resolution on this. I guess it won't be decided tonight, but can I afford the $250, $300 additional tax I'm going to see? Well, I have to and I can. It's not a problem with me. I have a lot of neighbors and friends that will, and others I've spoken with, that will have more of a problem with that and I'm sure y'all are aware of that. One of the members mentioned that on the sales tax, that a penny is, pennies add up and three and a half pennies add up a whole lot. So I hope you all consider that for the taxpayers and make a decision on this.
Thank you.
Good evening. Victoria Rono, 6430 Blenheim Road, Powhatan. I have attended and heard the presentation actually with the volunteers in attendance and I'm all over the board on this, I really am. I have an EMS son that works in a neighboring county. My prior life, I was a police officer. I get the emergency response, responsibility that we have to the county. I am concerned with the additional tax money and it not doing the job that we need it to do. I live probably the furthest west than anybody in this room and that station is empty. And I watched it on the slideshow that there was no staffing there and then, I don't know who asked it, it might have been Larry, I'm not sure, but it was like, what was the response time? And you went into, well, it's five minutes to be, you know, to get a response and if that doesn't respond, then you get another five minutes. And before we knew it, we were at 19 minutes before, and you weren't even near my house. So I question, you know, the reality of the time to get out to Blenheim Road with an empty Ballsville facility right there and all of the staffing that we've been talking about, I don't hear anything about that facility. And that's a concern for me. I don't have a problem with paying the taxes if it's going to help the western end of the county. And I've talked to my neighbors and we all are well aware that that is not staffed and we are all concerned about it. So I don't know how this is going to go. Be interested to attend the meeting whenever it is scheduled. I don't know quite yet when you all are going to put it together, but I have a couple of questions when the, and I really don't know, so this is not attacking, is that when the percentages were up and we were being compared to the other counties and what the rescue and fire and emergency responders were receiving, what was their debt in comparison? Are they at the 15% debt as well or? So I think, Mr. Voorhees, if you're going to shrug your shoulders because you don't, no, so I'm, so I'm just thinking that for the public to get a real perspective of this, we should see what that is alongside with what it's going to cost or what we pay for the current facilities now. And I want to thank those firefighters that were here, they probably all went home, but I want to thank them, number one, for their service and quite frankly, I was ready to say, "Go ahead, sign that check." And when they say, "Look, we need to be a little more grounded because that's not really the issues in our departments," my jaw drops. So I want more accountability. I want this to be done correctly, so, thank you.
Madam Chairman, Members of the Board, Mr. Voorhees, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Jerry Wallace. I live in District Three, address 2441 Brower Road. My wife and I bought property in Powhatan a little over seven years ago and retired here. We chose Powhatan because of the outstanding quality of life the county offers. I'm here tonight to offer my thoughts and individual on the proposed fire tax, the 3.5 cent increase to property tax rate. At the outset, let me say, we live on a fixed income and are not anxious to spend money we may not have. The U.S. Census Bureau estimates Powhatan County population has grown about 4% in the past nine years. At the same time, according to the National Fire Protection Association, the nationwide number of volunteer firefighters has decreased nationwide, not just Powhatan, by around 11%. Using these figures, that's a deficit of 7%. That's partially borne out by Powhatan Fire Rescue not meeting the NFPA call-response standards, which were previously accepted by this board. At the board meeting, or this meeting on April 11th and again tonight's meeting, I heard individuals point fingers of blame at a single person. The situation faced by the county, in my opinion, is not the fault of one individual or the administration. It's a result of county growth and changing times where nationwide volunteerism is not, is on the decline. Unless the county finds a way to stop all growth, this situation continuing to move in the wrong direction. The proposed three and a half cent property tax increase would provide funds dedicated to fire rescue, not for social programs we don't want or need, but for emergency services that when needed, may be life or death. This tax increase would cost me $100, $150 a year, about the cost of a good family meal at a sit-down restaurant. The proposal from Fire Rescue Department would provide for eight firefighter EMTs working 24/7 throughout the county. I see this as augmenting the services already provided by the volunteers and building on a strong foundation they've given us. I don't like paying taxes and may not be readily able to afford an additional $100, $150 annual taxes, but I don't see how I can afford not to take that, or to take the risk and oppose this tax. Therefore, I must fully support the establishment of County Fire District and the three and a half cent property tax increase to fund the district and I ask the board for their support, however unpopular it may be. Thank you.
Other comments? If you'd like to speak, please come on down so we can roll through the comments.
My name is Cynthia Mahone. I live at 3616 Huguenot Trail. As a introduction, my brother and father-in-law, the Foles, the Shirley Woods and his family, all participated in the expansion of the Fire and Rescue Squad in the late 60s, early 70s. My son, I mean, excuse me, my husband grew up in the current EMS building. He remembers playing around the fire and then the rescue squad equipment. All that was built by volunteers with the county's volunteer money. They fundraised everything they needed. You almost had me going that we really needed all these extra people until I saw, and I squinted to see the numbers, and I think I saw over $200,000 for additional administrative staff. I did not like that number. I do not think it's fair. We as a board, we as citizens have talked and talked about affordable housing. 3.5 cents additional tax will guarantee that all affordable housing does not exist in Powhatan. Thank you for not supporting this increase. Work with the volunteers and figure out what they need. The letter from the Huguenot guys of what they've asked for, that seems to be the truth. I see a whole lot of money go into some administrative staff that we don't need. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, my name is Mark Robinson. I live at 3571 Calvin's Trail. I spoke with you a few meetings ago, just to remind you, I spent about 10 years as a volunteer EMS provider and about five and a half years as a career EMS provider, so I have perspective from both sides of the fence. I continue to be worried that we're turning a public safety issue into a political, either tax issue or a volunteer versus career issue, when at the end of the day, it's really about a service, a public safety service issue to the citizens of this county. The statistics that have been provided clearly show that the current combination department is not meeting the objectives that you as a board laid out for the department. There's a lot of rhetoric about what might be the cause of that. I think some people know the facts of us in the, in the public. We don't have all the facts, so we're dependent on you guys to understand that and make the right decision. I will say, one gentleman earlier spoke about adding career staff causes volunteers to leave. That wasn't my experience. I spent many shifts on the ambulance as a career provider, working with volunteer providers, vice versa as a volunteer provider, riding with a career provider. At the end of the day, it's all about professionalism and working together to serve the citizens. As a volunteer and as a career provider, I never liked the term professional. I feel like they're all professionals, whether they're volunteer or career, but the county needs to staff the combination system to be able to meet the objectives that you've laid out, to be able to respond in an appropriate amount of time with an appropriate amount of equipment, with the right staffing and training. I know, I live in the Huguenot Trail corridor area. The volunteer rescue squad building sits there virtually unstaffed. It's very rare to see any vehicles there. So the building's there, the equipment's there, but there's nobody there to staff it. So, you know, somebody else spoke earlier about another section of the county where there's, there's no plans to provide staffing there as well. So the other thing I just ask that you take into consideration is that, don't just feel good because the village is covered and the Huguenot district is covered. You owe it to the citizens of the county to provide the same level of coverage to the entire county.
I have nothing prepared. My name is Howard Manning, 1841 Fair Pine Drive. Been a volunteer fireman in this county for about 18 years. As far as the staffing, paid guys were saying that they go to a call on their own. I've never been to a call where one person shows up and nobody's there to back them up. With the volunteers, if you need help, you go. You call out and everybody shows up. That's what volunteers do. So the paid guys, they work their shift and they're gone. Volunteers are there 24/7. That's about what I've got to say.
First off, Madam Chair, I was, I asked at, I called county administrators' offices, was told there was no time limits for comments during a public hearing.
Hmm.
So I may be running over whatever time you put up here. So first off, I am representing Huguenot Volunteer Fire Department on my, would you need to talk first?
Mr. Latchney?
What was you saying? I'm not sure. What did you just say?
I was, I called county administrators' offices, told there was no time limits for the amount of time public speakers could have during a public hearing, that there were only time limits during the public comment period at the beginning and at the end.
No, we, for one thing, the chair always has the right, especially when you have a large number of speakers to set a time limit, that there's, there's no generalized policy that there's unlimited time.
But you are speaking probably on behalf of a group, so our general guidelines are five minutes.
Okay. I'll be talking for a group and then individually after that. I'll be talking for a group and then individually after that, and I'll tell you when my break is.
Okay, Mr. Green.
Thank you. I'm Floyd Green, 2047 Hancock Road. First off, at first, I am representing members of Huguenot Volunteer Fire Department on an issue that I think I have support, not, well, I'm representing Huguenot, but also I think I have support from the volunteers and career staff throughout the county. It's referenced the replacement of the Heavy Rescue Unit at Company 2. That's operated by career or volunteer staff. I have two issues to talk to you about on that issue, on that vehicle. One is the timing. It's currently in the proposed CIP for replacement, and secondly, for the amount of funding that's in it. This unit was, came to this county in 2000, so makes it currently 19 years old. It was on the replacement plan to be replaced in the CIP for 2015. Every year, it's been kicked down the road a year. Every year, it's been kicked down a road of the year. And at this point, the last CIP that was published, it was slated to be replaced in 2020. Now, it's slated to be replaced in 2024, which will put the unit 24 years old and then take another year for it to get built and delivered to us. And again, so our request on that perspective of it, to put it into the future CIP, no later than 2021. We realize the financial straits the county is in in 2020. We know it's not likely going to happen in 2020, but we would like to at least be in the record for the next incoming Board members to see that as a need, that you see as a need for that in, for 2021. The second part of that is, in the last presentation we gave, we did extensive work coming up into 2018's budget for this unit, and at that time, we determined the need for it for FY 2018 was to be $815,000 for this unit, based on the needs of what we had identified from the company and also with the capabilities and needs that Chief Singer wanted to be included on this unit, capabilities that we don't have currently in the county. So, that's what was presented for 2017's budget. Well, but then it was actually listed at $750,000 in 2017's budget. And that's what has carried forward all the way into 2024. So, again, that we see as a need for the 2021 to be at at least $815,000, if not more. So, that's our basic request, is for it to be in 2021 at at least $815,000. Just real quickly on that aspect, it was based on age of the vehicle. That was the first rescue in the county. First one we got in the county before that, only things we had was what was carried on the, could carry on an engine, with limited amount of equipment on it, because this vehicle's primary purpose is the extrication of people trapped in vehicle accidents or trapped in, on, or under anything, just to have the tools and the equipment on that, ready to go. Again, that was the first one that entered the county, and I'm sure most of you can think back to your first automobile that you ever bought. You said, I wish I hadn't have done that. I wish I hadn't have got it this way. Well, now, we've already got it. We've had it for 19 years, and we just don't see as, that's the appropriate thing for the county to go another six years to even order it, excuse me, five years to order it and get it in six. And then when we got the vehicle, it was the economy model, both on the chassis and the body aspect. We've had a lot of brake issues, which lately, the transportation maintenance facility thinks, maybe we got that fixed for now, but it's still currently having electrical issues. So, again, that's the reasoning behind that, of why we needed that. Second thing, I would, that was for my representative of Company 2. Now, this is Floyd.
You're ahead of schedule. Congratulations.
Well, I don't know. Okay. Thank you.
Now, you get three minutes.
Okay. Thank you. That won't take this long, I said. With regards to the President, well, again, I thank, I met with, talked to each one of the members of the Board about the proposals that's been before you tonight on the operating side and the additional things above and beyond what the County Administrator's proposed balanced budget had and didn't have. Did want to point out a few things, and I pointed out a bunch of things to you that were errors or questions with regards to the plan, but again, as the County Administrator was going through some of the things tonight, I think, again, to the public, I think some other issues that I didn't bring up to each of you that I just picked out. On page 42 of the presentation, it talked about the assembly of forces and requiring six people or more. There is no method to track volunteers going to the fire scene to get their accurate amount of time on the scene. There is none. There's no computers, there is no, so how those figures clearly right there are not, can't be accurate, because any volunteers, anybody that goes to a scene, if they're career people that go on an ambulance, they're not being counted on those numbers. So, again, how those statistics, where that came from, I don't think is correct. On page 48, the funding comparison slide talks about how low the funding in Palatine is, which to me is not a bad idea, a bad thing from a taxpayer perspective. But again, a question is, do those funds include Fire Act grant that allowed us to completely overhaul and replace the breathing apparatus in this county that other counties might be funding locally? Does it include the Department of Fire Programs funds that are, that their county gets? Are these just strictly county appropriations compared to the other counties? So, again, these are things that do the matter, you know, trying to get apples to apples. The nighttime staffing slide on page 52, this is really, this is disturbing to me in that it was published and showing that how they, so much of the county not covered by the projected response time. But this is before the EMS support, nighttime support of the firefighter at Company 2, not including a firefighter at night at Company 4 as asked by them. It's not, it doesn't even include the ambulance, the additional $181,000 or $180,000 to cover that. So, if you look at that and that is covered and you have an ambulance staffed in that part of the county, you're going to cover, if you overlay the picture that showed where most of your calls are, with the exception of the prison, you've covered the vast majority of calls in the county with the amount of staff that you have there. So, again, that's, to me, ought to be updated with those proposals to get, again, apples to apples. You know, the firefighter from the Union Representative, the President from the Union stated about, well, please don't have one firefighter, please don't have one firefighter there. Well, they, the Chief's own plan has one firefighter at Company 5 during the day. So, obviously, are they not supporting the Chief's plan there, but one more people other places? I mean, that's questionable. So, this plan, right now, it's a volunteer department in this county supported by career firefighters. That's what they're hired to do, that's what they're, and that was the response. Sometimes it's two people on apparatus, sometimes it's one and the assembler crew on scene. That's a volunteer department, that's what a volunteer department is, and they're assisted by some career. If this proposal were adopted, the 1.2 million in there, then you're going to instantly switch in two-thirds of the county, you're going to switch from a volunteer department assisted by career to a career department assisted by volunteers. And it's only going to progress and you're only going to need more as we go. So, the individual that suggested, we stair-step into this with numbers, I think is the more appropriate method at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Joanne Fico, Maidens Road. I really hadn't planned to speak tonight, but I've been compelled by what I've heard When somebody calls 911, they need somebody to show up. Doesn't matter if they're paid or volunteered, everyone who shows up. I've had to call once so far in Palatine, and they were volunteers and they were as professional as anyone could be. Volunteerism has gone down. We might need some more professionals or paid fire department. I'll let you folks decide that. However, I was really upset when I'm listening to volunteer firefighters from quite a few of the companies who seem to really feel like they're not being heard, that they have additional information, that there are facts that seem to be a little bit skewed towards increasing professional or paid firefighters. And there seems to be a real, almost distrust I'm getting in the leadership. We're missing something in our leadership in the department right now. I don't know why, but you can't have a good department if the people don't trust their leader. And that's a problem, and that's what I'm hearing. That's like half the problem. Nobody seems to know what anyone else is doing, and they feel they're out of the loop. That should not be happening. So, you know, the 3.5 cents, hey, if that means I'm going to get somebody there in 15 minutes or less, hopefully, I'm more than willing to pay that 3.5 cents. It's not about the money for me. It's about making sure it's taken care of and making sure that we're listening to these volunteers. My son was a volunteer fighter, fighter many years, responded to 9/11 as a volunteer, had people on his crew succumb to cancers that they've had to deal with. I worry about him. And one day, I said, he's 37 years old now. I said, you know, if you had, could you go back and choose based on what you know now, what you know now that you didn't know then, would you still choose to go to Ground Zero? He said, there was no choice. This is what we have to do. This is what our volunteers do. So, I am really upset when it seems like they are not being respected or heard. That's just wrong, because this is the kind of people that we're dealing with. That's who these people are. That's how they live their lives. So, I think we need to start listening to our volunteers, and maybe we do need some extra, whatever, you know, but please start listening to our volunteers. It seems that there's a need. Thank you.
I wanted to piggyback a little bit off of what my son said earlier about Lou Holtz and leadership. Leadership can be defined as simply a trust in your people that you have working for you or working with you, is a better definition. I've been coaching football for 38 years. I'm an assistant coach at an area high school, and in January, I was asked to coach a men's semi-pro team in Richmond. I went to this team, and when I went in, I could have instituted my own program, kicked out all the staff and brought in all my own coaches. I didn't do that. Before I put in any plays, before I put in my offense, before I put in my defense, I got to know the players, what they were like, their families. I got to know the coaches. I got to know the owners of the team, what they wanted, what the history of the organization was, what the offensive coordinator wanted, what the defensive coordinator wanted, and then we slowly started. I see we're under two minutes. I can work with that. I can do a two-minute drill. We talked. We came to a good understanding of what everybody wanted. I didn't come in and ramrod what I wanted to do from a big system. We implemented what would fit our team, and that's what we're doing. Everybody's happy, and it works. Best leadership, not because of my ability to do it, because everybody's doing it. I don't believe in micromanaging. I believe in letting my people do their thing. My coaches coach. That's what they're there for. That's what the district chiefs are there for, the captains, the lieutenants. They do their jobs. My position coaches do their jobs, my coordinators do their jobs. Why do I need to coach the offense and the defense, the offensive line, defensive line, the secondary, when we have coaches? Let the people do their jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
I'm here to represent the Palatine Professional Firefighters Association. I'm not going to take the five minutes, so you can put down the two or whatever. Mr. Denali, you're right. It is a team effort. One thing that I strive for as a career firefighter in y'all's stations, and I try to get with the local volunteers every day when I'm there. What do you need done today? What do you, what can I do to make your job better? That's one thing I do myself strive to make the volunteers feel like we're not here to take over, which we're not. I can probably speak on behalf of my other colleagues that are career, I wouldn't want to say professionals, we're not career or volunteer, we're professionals, all across the board, all the same. Mr. Wallace is right. We don't want to send somebody out by themselves. I have the potential of showing up on a scene, on any scene, with one person. That's why we want to support at least a minimum of two folks on an apparatus. You've got to get out, you know, back somebody up, you run in a ditch, damaged apparatus, you know, multiple things could happen. So, we want to be able to support the increasing staff that the Chief is proposing in the line of safety.
Thank you.
My name is Andrew Beagle. I live at 2231 Fall Line Drive here in Palatine. I have a unique history in this county. I've been a member of the public safety and the fire EMS system with both the Volunteer Fire Agency, the Volunteer Rescue Squad, and now as a part-time career member. And as much as I hate to say it, our current system isn't working. Our response times prove, nobody's arguing the statistics, and unfortunately, we have to take drastic measures now in order to get ahead of this issue. And if we don't take drastic measures now, they're going to continue to get more expensive until we have to do something. And in that time, there's an increased chance for people getting hurt and people getting killed, and that's not a risk we can further take. I 100% support this tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments before we close this public hearing? Nope? Okay. So, we'll close that public hearing.
Madam Chair, can I get a two-minute break?
Yes, sir.
Please, I just need to.
Yes, sir.
Run to the facilities. It'd take me maybe a minute.
Absolutely. Yes. So, what will take, realistically, let's be back here in five minutes. I know it'll take that long.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
(inaudible).
I cannot meet on the first.
Bill wants to meet on the sixth.
All right. I think that's what David's talking to Ted about right now.
Don't let us go before we nail that down. Black schedule is cramped back.
Well, part of my question is, we've met before.
(inaudible).
Right.
Right.
(inaudible).
Well, and I think it needs to be, and I'm coming, I'll take advantage of this break too, but I think it needs to.
I'm sorry.
I know you want to.
I'm just trying to.
All of us.
What else?
I'm hearing he's going to spend an hour.
Did we decide we're meeting on the first?
I cannot meet on the first.
Bill wants to meet on the sixth.
All right, I think that's what David's talking to Ted about right now.
Don't let us go before we nail that down. Black schedule is cramped.
Well, part of my question is, well, we've met.
It's all we're talking about is station four, station two.
Right, right.
Fight one representative for each fire unit, not the whole world.
Well, and I think it needs to be, and I'm coming, I'll take advantage of this right now. But I think it needs to- I'm sorry. No.
I know you want to-
Guide and structure, you know, we need in a team.
Yeah, I'm just trying to-
Yeah.
I'm trying to get them to pick some dates.
So have you asked them?
I laid out a bunch of dates. I said, what-
You sent that?
Yes, yes.
Same day?
Yeah.
I misunderstood. So they know that we don't have a-
I, I don't know what they know, 'cause I haven't got a background, but that's intentional.
I mean, they said I'd come. Meeting, video, that is all made for people.
No, it was for, we would like to get feedback from different options. Thanks for coming. And ask a series of questions. And I forced them to do that after they gave me the six things. If you could get it down, I'd be lost. I'm about ready. That, that. Taylor, Taylor Good. I told you early retirement. I'll let you know something. Early retirement. Bill, I've been keeping myself alive. I've been trying to help me push this stuff.
Mr. Latchney, you ready? Billy, May 6th is good. No, but Carson did, and he told me. Mr. Nordvig, you ready to roll? Let's go ahead and bring this meeting back to order. Thank you. I think that was probably a little longer than five minutes, but we're just loose on the clock tonight. So the public hearing, we have closed the public hearing. There is no motion on this because it is not an action item tonight. So we will not have any of that. As part of the discussion, I would like to suggest the possibility of a meeting that was referenced earlier by Mr. Williams on the night of May the 6th. That seems to be a fairly good date for some people. I guess have it, have it across, down the hall or in here, maybe?
Six, six or five.
Oh, it's got to be. Can we even move it back a little bit later? I think it's hard for some people getting to work.
No, one day, sixth or the fifth.
I'm sorry, the sixth, at maybe 6:30. What do you think, Mr. Williams?
May 6th.
May 6th at 6:30.
Okay. And what day of the week is that?
Monday.
I think I'm good.
Any other?
It's good for me.
All right.
And this, this would be with the volunteers. So we wanna get that word out. If you haven't responded to the county administrator and his request for dates, you now need to know we're looking at the 6th at 6:30. And it would be here in the auditorium?
I, I, yes. It would, well, it, yes, just simply because of seating.
Well, it depends on how you can set it up now. You're gonna need a table where everybody can sit around the table.
And maybe it would be best in the workshop room, but we can figure out those logistics.
Okay, okay.
We'll figure that out.
And we can post something on the county website about the meeting, if, you know, for people-
We can put it out on Facebook.
Yep.
The companies can certainly distribute it through their databases. I will say that is not a good day for me, but one-fifth, you know, is not a barrier.
And did you say 6:30? Do we wanna say six to keep it consistent? Or is that, is that an issue?
Brenda, is six okay for your people? As a general rule, six o'clock is-
Because usually, our meetings are always at six. I don't want anybody showing up.
Yeah, 'cause I'll throw people off.
Taylor, is six okay for your people?
Six is, and I confirm with Captain Denotti from Company Four, that will work for a helmet particular as well.
Okay.
Oh, good.
Mr. Green. Mr. Timberlake, do you have any thoughts on this? Okay. All right, six o'clock on May the 6th in this building somewhere.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So I'm just gonna go ahead and-
Twelve A.
Pardon me?
Move to twelve A.
Move on to, which was now really 12B. That is the Virginia Department of Transportation and the six-year plan.
Hold on, just, did we wanna talk about the capital improvement plan at all?
As part of the hearing?
It's part of the hearing. I mean, now Ted referenced, you know, one year in the CIP. What I would like to do is to reiterate something we talked about at the last meeting. And that is where we have proposed debt funding projects in the capital improvement plan. In each year where we're proposing to do that, I wanted to see the modeling where, to see how it impacted our debt policy. So in other words, you look at your current debt schedule, you see your retiring debt, and then the years where we're projecting to take on new debt, use a reasonable interest rate and project forward as to how that would affect our debt policy. Because that's important. If we're unrealistically planning on funding something with debt that's gonna be outside our debt policy, then we have a problem. And we need to know that. So I would like to, you know, just have that information available to us in our planning for the five years.
Okay.
Does it also make sense to ask the question, since we're asking questions like that, is there an operating budget result of a capital improvement project? Sometimes we don't ask ourselves, how are we gonna man that capital project? And we add to the head count, and then we have to find money next year in the budget for-
You mean actually increase the debt payments with the layering into debt?
I'm talking about adding to the operating budget.
I know, but I'm saying, but you're talking about the debt payments that you're gonna have to pay for the CIP if we layer into debt.
No, can I give an example? And see if I'm right? Let's say we did the second story expansion to the high school. That probably means we need more teachers, et cetera. And that would be a personnel cost associated with the CIP cost. Am I there? Is that right?
Yeah.
That's one example. So just because we have a CIP amount figured in, there might be complementary or riders from the operating budget that are necessary to fulfill that CIP rule.
A prime example would be if we choose to do a second transfer station, we're gonna have to man the second transfer station-
Okay, that's a clear example.
In perpetuity, in the operating budget.
Yep, good, good example, good example. Absolutely, if you would like to expand that to include that, I think it makes sense. I was starting, you know, just with the basics of the debt policy.
I understand.
But, no, I think that makes sense, Mr. Tucker.
Great. All right. Anything else on that?
No.
Good? Now. Welcome to your first Powhatan County Board of Supervisors hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. For introduction, my name is Rebecca Worley. I'm one of the Assistant Resident Engineers at Chestfield Residency. Lee McKnight is also here. He's the other assistant. We've been working with Kevin Reichert for the past couple of years, so.
You're the two people that's taking Kevin's place, right?
In the interim, yes, until they hire someone, so.
Good luck.
So I believe you have a copy of the secondary six-year plan in front of you and the priorities that have kind of been laid out over the past few years. There aren't really updates to it this year. So I'll just run through what's on there currently. So the Carter-Gallier Boulevard project, that's the one that was completed in August 2018. It's still listed there as the project reaches financial closure, so no additional funds are being allocated. It's just still presented on your secondary six-year plan. The Huguenot Trail 711 widening project is still under construction and will be wrapping up within the next month. The construction staff is working with some adjacent property owners to iron out some last-minute details of that construction project. So again, no additional funds allocated to that, just shown as wrapping up in your county. One project, the Route 711 and Huguenot Springs intersection improvement project was funded through SmartScale. You all chose to apply secondary six-year plan funds to it several years ago, so that continues to show on your plan. And Cool Lane, the rural rustic project that we did last year, there's still some money available, and our, our area headquarters staff is planning to shoot that road one more time this year with the remaining funds that are available there. And the final items are just placeholder cost centers for any rural addition projects that the county might consider to bring into the state system, engineering and survey work that might be associated with those projects. And then the final line is for future secondary funding. It's just a placeholder cost center where you can pull funds from to apply to other secondary projects. So this year, any changes to allocations? That money was just applied directly to that future secondary funding line item. No new projects were created.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
So some questions on some projects. So we're closing out some projects because they've been completed and fully completed. Should we not be adding some projects, specific projects? One of the projects that stays in my mind, Route 13 and Route 60, has been something that was supposedly being studied, and we're gonna get a recommendation back, whether you realign it, whether you do it here, whether you do it there. And frankly, it's one of the most dangerous intersections in our county. 609 and 13 been something that been, has been discussed. Page Road and Route 60. Some of these projects that have been laying there, I think if we're gonna take projects off that we've gotten fully completed and funded, then we should line up, become prepared possibly to have some dialogue on some other projects. And I'm sure each of us have other areas that we've considered. But I do know those two projects I referenced first, Route 13 and Route 60, and then 609 and 13 have been there for a while.
Well, if we go back to our SmartScale projects and what we prioritize, isn't, isn't that a starting point? I mean, because going to your point, Billy, I had projects in my district, you know, for SmartScale. You know, the Route 60-Jews Ferry improvements, Route 711, which goes in the intersection of Jews Ferry, which goes back to the corridor study in '06. So that's been out there forever. So to your point, if there's an opportunity to prioritize and lay in, or starts, you know, layering in, you know, new projects, because as she said, the 711 widening east of 288, that's down to a punch list now, is what I understand.
That's correct.
That's in the last throes. So that'll be going off the table.
Carter-Gallier will be off the table.
Carter-Gallier will be off the table.
Cool Lane, which is a rural unpaid road funds, but-
So if, if you need data for the Route 13, Route 60, you know, realignment, whatever it is, and recommendations, and we need to make decisions regarding that project and other projects like we've just talked about, when would be the right time for us to do that?
That was one of the questions I was gonna ask, Mr. Williams.
Well, I mean, if we're gonna, are we gonna pass a six-year plan tonight, is my understanding? And we know very quickly a couple of projects are gonna be coming off.
And my question is, do we need to adopt a six-year plan tonight, or do we have some leeway here, what we have in the past, possibly, not, not that we like kicking the road down the can, kick, kick the can down the road, I'm sorry.
And we know you wanna come back when the meeting-
Absolutely, I'd love to.
You've been thoroughly entertained tonight.
Well, and if I may, Madam Chair, Rebecca is gonna be the stand-in for Kevin Reichert to the previously alluded-to joyride, right? The ride-along down Dorset Road. So after the Dorset Road ride-along, and I know Mr. Melton and I did one with Butch Siri, which was before Kevin, and that was very eye-opening and very valuable. So I may have an addition to this list, or Rebecca may have an addition to this list based on that also, because we'll be talking about some intersections. So anyway, I'll look forward to that. So I have the same question that you two do. Do we need to do this right now when we know it's gonna change?
Well, I don't think it was clear at all that this would be done now. This, what I thought we were doing is receiving public comment on.
Well, this is basically, basically a public hearing.
Yes, it is. So I don't think any decisions need to be made.
This is usually the time when we do it.
Yeah, I mean, you certainly could approve it tonight if you were prepared to do that, but it's not necessary if you wanna receive the public meetings tonight.
We have to hold the public hearing.
Yes, I understand that.
I will just make one more comment about some of the SmartScale projects that you mentioned and your priorities there. So if you plan to apply for those projects again in SmartScale, even if you approve a plan now with that funding in that future secondary line item, you can amend your secondary six-year plan at any time during the next fiscal year, if you wanted to.
So what I hear you saying is that if we have them on this plan, and we were to qualify for SmartScale, it wouldn't penalize us by having them on this plan and then applying for SmartScale?
Good question.
Yeah, so you would just apply for the additional amount of funds that you needed?
We want it all, we want all funded from SmartScale. We would only, we only get $97,000 a year, I think, is what it is for road funds.
Yeah, you could choose to apply that $97,000- Yeah, you could choose to apply that $97,000 and then apply SmartScale for the difference that was needed for the project, or you could choose not to include it on your secondary plan and apply for the whole amount.
So what she's telling us is if you put it on there, whatever funds you had to, it would come out of your SmartScale allocation, basically. Okay. Thank you for telling us that.
But we do have to have a public hearing.
Yes, I know. Are there any other questions?
I'm sorry, no.
Okay, all right. So now we'll open the public hearing on this. If you would like to comment on this matter only, please, we would love to hear from It appears that there are no public comments. Nope, no public comments. Okay, so we'll close that hearing, and it's not a motion sort of a thing.
It is. I think we would need to make a motion to do something, a vote or defer, or can we defer this public hearing?
I mean, there's no resolution, there's.
Public hearing's closed, but you can defer action. There is a resolution.
Yeah, there is.
What resolution number is it?
Yeah, that's what I meant before, is it is up for a vote tonight. We don't have to.
Right, you can defer action.
Kind of asking.
So, Madam Chair, I would prefer that we defer this and then ask VDOT and staff for some backup to be able to make the decision.
For projects with some basis for rating or, you know, recommending projects by priorities using either accidents, whatever.
So let's try to get that in a little bit more clearly worded motion.
Okay, so I move that we defer.
Resolution 2019-19.
Which one?
2019-19.
2019? It's actually not, she is correct, it's not a resolution. It's listed as 12A. Anyway, I'm going to defer and request that we receive data.
Move to approve. All right, okay. I guess.
I second the motion.
Let me be clear, what the motion is, is defer action on the resolution tonight for the six-year plan and requesting that staff work with VDOT to come forward with a list of projects of road improvements based on prioritization using accident history and other data, and bring it to the board for our final recommendations for inclusion on the six-year plan.
So I would defer for at least probably till our June meeting. I hope that's not too far, because it's going to take, we've got to let staff know what projects. We can use SmartScale as a base, we can use, you know.
I think my staff knows what we've looked at in the past, and what we've looked at in the past has been accidents.
So do you want to use, would you prefer to use 30 days, David? Would you want to do 60 days?
Let's defer it to our next regular meeting.
Okay.
I'm going to pause on that for a second.
No, my regular meeting, I'm talking about not the adoption budget night, I'm talking about the May regular meeting.
Would that be okay?
We're giving our staff homework, and we have a budget to do. We're still looking at the comp plan, the fire and rescue issue. They're doing a lot right now, is all I'm saying. So are we being unfair in only giving them 30 days when we can do it in 60, and it doesn't really make that much difference, I'm thinking?
Does June make a difference?
You could do it in either May or June, because the fiscal year starts July 1st.
Right.
Oh, that's kind of pushing it to do it at the end of June, but, I mean, then we have to do it, then there, you know, that's, we must agree that night.
My only point is, we should probably check with the staff and make sure that we're not giving them more to do than they have the resources to do.
Because the meeting is June the 24th or May the 20th, so June the 24th is right up against July 1st.
I agree with you, Angie. Andrew, real quickly. Come to me. Andrew, is this a major impediment to your workload at this moment?
He's looking at Brett because Brett was involved in this heavily.
All right, Brett. Given you've got a lot of this information anyway from SmartScale, VDOT's got the accident history, you can concatenate the two, and I think you'll have a product that you can present to the board for a vote.
Okay, so let's do that by May 24th. That gives us a month to tweak if needed.
So, Madam Chair?
I'm sorry, May 20th. Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, one question of VDOT. The work that's been supposedly done on studying Route 60 and 13, can I get that as any work that's been done or dialogue that's taken place? Can I at least get some factual data on what's being discussed?
Yes, sir. I just received a study from Traffic Engineering just for signage and pavement markings, which would be an interim.
That'll help in the turn lane, I mean, the crossover.
An interim solution until a project could be applied for, a construction project. And there are a couple possibilities. Last time in SmartScale, we had looked at the possibility of realigning 13 to intersected Academy Road.
Yes.
Traffic Engineering has also suggested R-cuts, so you would kind of restrict traffic on 13 from making left turns onto 60, and they would be forced to turn right and make a U-turn, which would improve safety. So there's a couple options that we could work through in the next round of SmartScale.
Just please have as much of that data for this board as we get into that. And the last thing, could you teach people which side of the turn lane to get on when they come across? I'm just kidding.
On 13, 13 and 60, that's part of the pavement marking plan, so that'll help.
Thank you for that. Anyway, I'll be fine. So the motion is to defer to our May 20th meeting and get the data.
Yes, second. That's just an all in favor. We don't need to be polled for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay, so then that takes us to 12C, which is a public hearing on 2019-17.
All right, case number 19-03-CUP, which is ordinance O-2019-17, is a request by Lyman Real Estate Holdings LLC for a conditional use permit to allow automotive repair and servicing within the general commercial C zoning district. The property is located at 2044 New Dorset Road, which is tax map number 41C-1-6. The subject property is designated as Village Center on the countywide future land use map in the 2010 comprehensive plan, and is located within a designated growth area, the Route 60 Quarter East Special Area Plan. There is an existing building on the property that dates to 1996, and the applicant would like to locate this business within that existing building with minimal changes to the structure or the surrounding site. The Department of Community Development recommends approval of this request, subject to eight conditions listed in the staff report. Conditions address freestanding signage, landscaping, and parking. At its meeting on April 2nd, 2019, the Planning Commission, after discussion, recommended approval of this request with a vote of five to zero. The applicant is also here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Would the applicant like to speak?
You sat through a long meeting, you can speak.
James Lyman, 440 Clayville Road, Powhatan, Virginia. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. I don't think, we'll wait on any questions we may have. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing then, and maybe some questions will come from that. But is there anybody here that would like to comment on this? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Gentlemen, do you have any questions of staff or the applicant?
Mr., I have one question, a quick question today. I promise I'm not trying to drag this out, just a quick question or staff. So I see that, I guess it's some of our new landscaping standards requires that they plant shrubbery around the foundation?
That's correct.
Okay. In my past business experience, insurance companies discouraged shrubbery around buildings for the purpose of hiding and et cetera, et cetera. So that's something maybe that, you know, one day we should consider, but it was something in my past business experience that your insurance companies discouraged. But if it's in our new landscaping standards, then it is in the new landscaping standards, so, just for the record.
I think you're right.
Yeah, yeah.
But now is not the time to talk about that.
No. It's part of the conditions that are on this case, so.
Okay. Mr. Nordvig, it's your district.
I move that we approve O-2019-17, case number 1903CUP, for Lyman Real Estate Holdings LLC.
Second.
Comment, just a quick comment. First of all, Ms. Lyman, thank you for your investment in our county. Secondly, Mr. Roth and his expansion of his repair business, I applaud him, he does a wonderful job, and I'm very happy that he's chosen to expand in our county. Thank you.
Bonnie, I think we need a poll on this.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Norvig?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavill?
Aye. Thank you. We're, so I just want to mention it. I've been instructed that we do not need to proceed with 2019-18 because it was resolved with the RC issue, but I did want Mr. Pompey to bring it up since it was advertised as a public hearing.
That's correct. Case number 19-02-RZC was a request by Anderson 23139 LLC to rezone tax map parcel 42-67A from residential, commercial, RC, and agricultural 10, A10, to Commerce Center. With the approval of ordinance O-201838 earlier in the meeting, that particular piece has already been rezoned to Commerce Center, so this request is no longer needed to achieve that outcome.
Okay. I guess, should I give anybody any, okay.
Just, so we just want to understand, VDOT's comments on access management, so it didn't currently, while it has an approved entrance, and I fully understand it, Mr. Worley has been operating his business before, for many, many, many years, but they referenced that it did not currently meet our access management standards.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. And so by doing what we did, any property that was currently zoned RC would go to CC even if it doesn't meet access management standards?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to understand.
So, Mr. Pompey, you can just step on back there. So we, D, we post, the old D, 2019-19, we postponed to May 9th, Mr. Williams. So that takes us to 2019-20. This is the rural event venue.
All right, so this particular request, which is also references case number 19-07-AZ, is a request by Powhatan County to amend several sections of the zoning ordinance to create a new use called rural event venue. This use would be defined, listed as conditional use within certain rural zoning districts, and use standards and other standards regarding signage and off-street parking would be established for this new specific use. Use standards address minimum acreage requirements, building size, setbacks, and noise. The intent of this amendment is to better clarify this type of use, which is currently classified as a conference or training center, so right now we classify event venues as conference or training centers, which may not be the most intuitive term. It's also intended to establish clear guidance and use standards for this specific use. This issue was discussed at several workshops held by the Planning Commission, and at its meeting on April 2nd, 2019, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this request with a vote of five to zero. I'd be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
So Andrew, I'm sorry, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
So Andrew, just for clarity, so conditional use permitted is an A10, correct?
That's correct. Correct, it's a conditional use permit.
A20, conditional use permit. This would have handled, would this have handled the Llewellyn case more clearly?
Yes. The terminology is a little bit more intuitive to what the use is, so it would clarify.
It would have helped in that situation.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I have.
All right. So we'll go ahead and open up the public comment period. Any public comments? Public hearing, no. We'll close that.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Ordinance 0219-20, case 1907AZ, I move we approve it as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? No. Bonnie?
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Norvig?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavill?
Aye. Okay, so now we go to O-2019-21.
So ordinance O-2019-21 is a request by Powhatan County to amend the fee schedule to waive the fees associated with rezoning applications involving properties that were previously zoned RC prior to the adoption of ordinance O-2018-38 earlier tonight. So properties that were rezoned RC and have been reclassified to another zoning district, if they submit a rezoning application, or the owner submits a rezoning application prior to January 1st, 2025, there will be no fees associated with that zoning application at the county level. The Department of Community Development recommends approval of this request, and this is an ordinance amendment that the board requested be presented at tonight's meeting. We discussed it at the previous meeting.
Questions of staff? Open the public hearing. Any comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Bonnie?
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Norvig?
Aye.
Mr. Melton?
Aye.
Mr. Tucker?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavill?
Aye. All right, so that takes us to the end of our agenda. There is a final public comment period. I remind you, three minutes, five minutes, not a forum for political campaigning, promoting a business, or personal attacks. Please sign in. Any comments in this final public comment period? We will close that, and county attorney comments?
No comments, Madam Chair.
County administrator comments?
Brief comments, so just a couple reminders. Next week, May 1st, is the best date we could come up with for consensus for the courthouse expansion, 911 center ribbon cutting. Invitations were sent out to board members, and that is in the afternoon with the 5:00 goal for the ribbon cutting, begin festivities at 4:30, tours, et cetera. I will go to the senior policy group after that to talk a little bit more about fire and rescue, but then we just set tonight, 6:00 on the 6th of May. The following week will be our workshop on fire and rescue, and then that will be a busy week, because then on Thursday, the 9th, which is our regular special meeting workshop, we are scheduled to consider adopting the budget for fiscal year 20, and that is the, that's the schedule that keeps us on compliance with school board budget adoption prior to the 15th of May. So there's just a few dates there. I also want to let the board know that we are making application to the new USDA reconnect grant program. We had some concern that that might not be something we could be eligible for because of our, either affluence as a community or the fact that there is a certain amount of connectivity in parts of the county. We are working with a third party who has some success in doing these kinds of projects with USDA. The application process is no cost to the county, but if we are successful, then there's a fee associated with their work upfront, and so we're excited about that opportunity. The deadline is the end of May, so we're working with them to get that application in, and that would be a similar type of product to the kind of thing that we've been talking about with SCS, would be a fixed wireless service in the western part of the county that could serve a five-mile radius and hit a lot of folks in the west. So just a heads up, and I wanted to mention that, and you'll have more information about that on the June workshop. Thank you.
Board comments?
Just one quick comment. I will not be at the meeting on May 1st. It's my 39th birthday, so I will be out of town.
Your 39th what?
Birthday.
Your 39th what?
It's the anniversary of his 39th birthday.
All right. Any other? Yes, sir.
It's my pleasure this week to host a friend of mine, and she is from the Masai tribe located, her portion is located in Kenya, Africa. She's staying in my home this week. She is speaking this week at a couple different schools. She's had a meeting today. She's meeting with members of the community tomorrow afternoon. Basically, her name is Cecilia. Cecilia's booked up until about 2:00 on Friday or Friday evening, so if. Cecilia's booked up until about 2 o'clock on Friday or Friday evening, so if any church group, teacher, anyone who'd like to host an open house, et cetera. And here are some fascinating stories. Her husband, Joseph, taught in a couple of my classes a few years ago when I was teaching social studies. He's been involved in protecting their herds from lions. Three times, they fought lions off with spear, club, and bare hands. So they have some real stories to tell. And so we have someone directly from the Masai tribe here this week. So again, the last opening would be Friday afternoon into the evening, anytime in there after 2 o'clock on Friday afternoon. She departs for Baltimore Saturday. Thank you.
I have a couple of comments before we close up. I just wanted to thank everybody that was involved in Earth Day Thursday, the tree planting on Monday, and then Amnesty Day that was this past Saturday. Those are really neat events that are all sponsored by county citizens with supportive staff, and they're wonderful events, and they are growing each year, and I thank everybody that was involved in those. I also, I'm sorry that Joanne and Whitney left, but the library is really thinking outside of the box, helping to address some of the connectivity issues in the county by offering free mobile hotspots that you can go to the library and check out like a book for two weeks. I think it is wonderful. Comcast was down in the village for quite a few people today, and once I realized, I thought about going home, but then I realized that I had a mobile hotspot and was able to get work done. So they are wonderful. I think that's great that our library has taken that initiative. And then briefly, just to touch on, this is like the most power-packed weekend, I think, in Powhatan's calendar. There's the Antique Power Show, both days this weekend. Well, I guess it started today with the Lions Club Golf Tournament and steer roast, and then the Antique Power Show Saturday and Sunday on Academy Road, the Festival of Fiber on Saturday here in the village, the Free Clinics Bike Tour begins here in the village at the Rescue Squad Building on Sunday. There's going to be a Roaring 20s Party at Bienvenue here in the village, sponsored by the distillery, Saturday evening, and the Moose Lodge here in the village is having their seafood festival. I believe it's the second annual seafood festival this weekend. So those are all wonderful events that are curated by citizens for organizations in this county, and that is thousands of people that will be in Powhatan County this weekend because some citizens thought this sounded like a good idea. So I thank all of them for doing that, and I hope that you can find some time in the weekend to go to some of those, if not all of them. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just make one mention I forgot. We have a resource for citizens and folks who might be interested in running for public office. It's a map that our GIS folks have put together that show all the election precincts and maps them out with major subdivisions, all it's, it's something that might be useful. So if you are interested in the politics and what the districts look like and all that, we can get you a copy of that map, and each candidate is going to be furnished with a copy of that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll adjourn this meeting.
John, thank you. Thank you.
So, so, Powhatan girls beat Midlothian at a double overtime. I know. Isn't that exciting?
That's very exciting.
I know.